Good evening, Littleton. It's June 9th, 2025, 5:30 PM. This is called a Select Board meeting. And we'll go into executive session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. All those in favor?
I think it's a yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chuck is a yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. We'll see you in about half an hour. Thank you. Good evening, Littleton. We're back. It is 6:07 and Select Board is now in session. It's been common session.
The committee has a call. We're in session.
Okay, School Committee?
The School Committee has a call.
Okay, great. We'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Are we going to go through the mail real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll start with, we'll do the mail real quickly and then we'll go into meeting with the Penn Con School Committee, hopefully PMBC and Shaker Lane Building Committee to discuss the transfer request from the Reserve Fund for 36 King Street Installation, a Finance Committee Reserve Fund Policy, and review and update of the Shaker Lane building project. We'll then move on to public input, members' updates, Select Board discussion, and minutes, and then we will adjourn promptly at 8:35.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just want to make current vacancies on town boards, appointed by the Select Board, Agricultural Commission, Conservation, Economic Development, Historical Commission, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Urban Municipal Building Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and one appointment by the School Committee to be on the Finance Committee. You have sign up to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. Scan the QR code or register www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activities, town meeting changes, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events, stay informed. Here we have a gift acceptance form from the Executive Director from EHS. Name of the party offering the gift is the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Foundation, the amount of $8,000. The purpose of the gift is Energy Assistance Program, and be expended through the EHS Energy Assistance Program. Thank you very much. That's just a letter. Here we have another gift acceptance form from the Executive Director of EHS. Name of the party offering the gift is the John C. Morrison and Eunice B. Morrison Charitable Foundation, the amount of $2,500. Purpose of the gift to help continue the mission for the residents of Littleton. The Tred Fund, tax relief for the elderly and disabled. Thank you very much for your kindness. And there is a supporting letter.
That's it?
Yes, I'm just trying to get back to... She is. IT is coming. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry for the delay. Here we are. Take it away.
Want to say for us?
Yes, please.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us this evening. My name is Mark Safford. I'm with Turner Townsend Harry, the owner, project manager for this project. With us this evening is also Suresh Patia from Atlantic Management and Construction, who's also on the OPM team, and Matt McCaffrey with Turner Townsend Harry, Studio G Architects, Mary Lee Mercer, project manager, Steve Mishner, principal. Michelle Kane, you all probably know, with the principal of Shaker Lane. Kelly Clincham introducing the people that are going to be speaking, so I just want to bring them up. Kelly and Steve, Steve Anoudi. So we have a few things we want to update you on tonight. You can see the agenda in front of you. We're going to go over the MSBA process review. We're going to update you on the cost, where they stand, what the impact is going to be on the taxes, discussion about the geothermal system, a comparison to some other school data information from MSBA for similar projects in the state and the area, give you an update of where we are in the design, review some of the issues that we have in the current school, get to a point if, what if the project doesn't pass, let's talk about what, you know, we need to do after that. There's also the cost of doing nothing if that happens as well, and then what next steps would be. So, next slide, please. So this is the MSB process that we've been at for a little over two years now. They break it down by a series of modules that they have, modules one through 10. We've already completed modules one through four. We're at the tail end of module four right now, which is going to be the submission of the schematic design package to the MSBA. They need that information, which has the updated cost estimates in it, to review it, and then they will recommend the project to the Board of Directors at the MSBA at the end of August. If the Board of Directors accepts that, then we can move into the next phase, but obviously contingent upon town vote as we get to that point. So it's a long process. It's been between getting to the PDP piece and the PSR piece and determining what to do, what to build, renovate, add additions, get a new building, get estimates along the way, get to the point where we are right now, where the committee determined to have a new building, under new construction. We had estimates back in October, and now we have updated estimates today. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is where we stand at the moment. Back in October '24, the estimated total project cost, that means everything, hard costs, soft costs, total was $104.2 million. Now that they've gotten to the schematic design point, that number now has been brought down to $94.1 million. So taken a little bit of money off there, which is good. And we have two columns there to show you the cost without geothermal and the cost with geothermal. Sort of like to have that, you know, discussion about if geothermal needs to be part of the project, understand that's what the cost is going to be now. All these numbers, obviously your estimates, we're only at schematic design. We've got another year plus to go through design development and documents before we can get close to bid time. So hopefully these numbers will be adjusted as we go through that, hopefully down. But there are, this is just estimates at the schematic design phase. So the estimated MSBA grant right now for the town without geothermal is $28.2 million, with it is $29. Net costs to the town, roughly $65, almost $66 million without geothermal and almost $69 million with it. So we've been going back and forth with great information with Steve Anoudi and the team, and Steve is just going to pick it up from now to talk about the rest of the numbers. Thanks.
So you see the two project options there up on the screen. Without geothermal, we're at $817 in the first year. Again, first year, worst year, for tax effect to the residents, it's $68 per month if we divide that out. With the geothermal option, it's $859, first year, worst year, again, 72. And if we go back and we look at how we progressed with these costs, back in October '24, the first time, our first initial estimates, $1,850 first year. We'd lower that down to $995 when we were at the $104 million back in this past town meeting, January of this year, and now we're down to the $94.98. What we have to remember is town meeting is going to, see, we're going to either present to town meeting authorization to look at 94.1 million or 98.1, because these are the last estimates that we're going to get before town meeting. So these numbers, the only thing that's going to change would be the MSBA grant that'll be finalized in August. My next slide. See, so there's a typo right in that top number there. Should be $65,900,000. So this is the without geothermal option. Total project cost, if you saw on the last screen, was 65.9. Let's talk about these next two numbers, the offsets. If you remember back, even just the January option, what we presented at this past town meeting, we had bond premium of $5 million. So we were reducing the principal by $5 million. Since January, interest rates have done nothing but increase. So the 5% coupon that we're using is holding firm, but because yields are going up, the premium has begun to shrink in some of the issuances that have been done lately. So we reduced that down to $4 million. Our goal was $6 million on this building stabilization fund. We were able to put a little bit more to that fund this past town meeting, so our new estimate is around $6.5 million. So that brings this net bond amount down to $55,400,000. Two numbers to look at, there's a lot of numbers on the page, two numbers to look at. First row, last column, 817, 28, first year, worst year tax impact. On the very bottom corner, $13,293.61. That is the total 20-year tax impact that we're estimating using our assumptions for the average home in Littleton, which is around $700,000 or so. That's an average of $664 per year. Our estimate back in May, at the May town meeting, that number was $16,443. So we reduced that by $3,150, taking about $150 off the annual tax impact. So again, these numbers are coming down. Next slide, Jim? Thank you. This is the geothermal option. Total project cost goes up to 68.7 million, same offsets. Bond we issue is 58.2. First year, worst year tax impact, 859.59. Total tax impact for the average home is $14,065 for the 20-year period, $703 per year. That's a savings of $118.90 from our May '25 estimates at town meeting.
Steve, can you take questions now or do you want to wait?
Why don't we wait, Brian? Next page.
Hi, everyone. Mary Lee Mercy from Studio G Architects. I'm the project manager on the Shaker Lane School project. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about the differences between geothermal versus an air source heat pump system. Both of them would allow us to get 3% additional reimbursement points from the MSBA through their green schools program. The replacement frequency generally is about around 20 years for an air source heat pump system versus 30 years for a geothermal system. There is a federal IRA tax credit, which can give us, I believe it's 25.5% back on an installed geothermal system. Based on what has been happening politically, that tax credit is still good, and it should be good through the year 2030, with an expected completion date of 2028 on this project, then we would qualify for that tax credit. So looking at just these systems, this is only the cost of the systems, we're looking at air source heat pump at $7.8 million versus geothermal at $10.6 million. And then once you factor in that $2.7 million tax credit, then ground source heat pump, geothermal drops down to $7.9 million once we get the tax credit. So the comparison between just the systems, this does not include any of the additional markups that have to happen, which Steve will talk about next, but the system cost difference ultimately is $100,000 more for the geothermal system. There's a couple of strategies that we're considering that could happen here. First strategy is we decide now that we don't want to install geothermal, that we are not confident that the IRA tax credit is going to come to us, and we'd rather have the lower cost of the project presented on the town ballot, in which case that would be the, the 94.1 million would be what goes to the town vote. Another strategy would be to keep geothermal in for now, ask for the higher amount at town vote, and then it sort of buys us a little bit of time to make the decision. So at bid time, if we think that the tax credit is still viable, then we could use geothermal as the basis of design. But if we're not so certain of it, then we could bid geothermal as an add alternate. What that will do is let us know a more updated cost of what the system will entail, and then we can make the decision then as to which system actually gets installed. Steve?
So you heard Mary Lee talk. We do have some time to make a final decision on this. Of course, the architects would certainly like the decision made yesterday instead of waiting. Go back to slide, Jim. Yeah. The other way. There you go. So Mary Lee left off, we had $100,000 difference, but I just wanted to explain it and break it down a little bit further, because it's kind of misleading where it is. So again, top line, project costs with and without. We have 94.1 without the geo and 98.1 with geo. It's a $4 million variance in project. Again, that's the number the town meeting will be voting, because they have to authorize the entire amount that we're going to issue, potentially issue. MSBA grants, higher project costs at the 98.1. We can expect a little higher grant coming in from the MSBA. Right now, we're estimating that at $1.2 million increase. So the difference in the net project cost is $2.8 million. So we'll be issuing a bond that's $2.8 million higher, and we saw that on the other slide, the difference between the 55.4 and the 58.2 that was on the other slide. We have the credit, potential credit come in for that $2.7 million, which means net project cost is about $100,000 difference. But, as I mentioned, we're going to be issuing a bond that's $2.8 million higher, because you have to install the system. It means you have to pay for it, and then you get credits back after the fact. So our bond is going to be higher. And that $2.8 million has $1.2 million worth of interest associated with it. Hard to believe, but over 20 years, that's the total amount that we'll be paying in extra interest. So the decision, geothermal, not geothermal, is a $100,000 difference decision. It's a $1.3 million decision to make. On top of that, we go down that road and we decide, let's install the geothermal system. We go to bid, and all of a sudden, now things can happen recently, those credits go away. We're on the hook for that $2.7 million also. So now this decision is all of a sudden a $4.1 million decision that we're making. So those are the options that we have. Mary Lee explained that the credits are good till 2030 in current legislation, but we know what's happening. The next slide, Jim? This talks about the impact, the tax impacts, that extra $1.3 million, well, actually, that extra $4 million in project cost, 2.8 for the bond plus the interest that we're doing. First year, tax variance on the average home, again, $42. Years one through five, it's an average increase of $51.94. So that top line is with geothermal, the bottom line with the darker shading, that's without the geothermal system. So we're talking about the differential there. Averages six through, years six through 10, $36.66. Eleven through 20, $32.89, with a total 20-year variance of $771.93. That only averages $38.60 per year over the 20 years. So to the average home, we're not talking about a lot of money, but if we're looking to minimize things as much as we can, this is certainly one way. The money that we've already decided to put into this with that debt exclusion stabilization policy that we have, we were at 11% payment within the levy. We're now at 13.14 without the geo system and 12 and a half with the geo system. So the amount that's being funded within the levy is starting to increase little by little. And that will change again once we figure out what the MSBA total will be.
All right, shifting gears a little bit, this data is taken from the MSBA's website. They track project costs, and they have been doing it since the MSBA came into existence. This chart goes back to 2009. All of those black squares on there represent elementary schools. And of particular interest is projects that are being bid now for the next two years, when we would expect Shaker Lane to be bid. And that, I'll just give you a moment to absorb this chart a little bit. You can see how much school costs have risen. This is dollars per square foot from 2009, and you can see the way that it's trending. And so that rectangle up there, if you could go to the next slide, please. This is zoomed in on that area. So right now, all of those schools that are called out in the pink rectangles are schools that are entering bid from now for the next two years. And so you can see where Littleton falls on the chart. Other than the outlier of North Adams, Littleton is the least expensive per square foot. You can see, we're not sure where these projects are going to end up when they do their next round of estimates or their next round of construction costs, but this is where it was as of October 2024, when the MSBA last updated this chart. They should be doing another update after their next board meeting, so we would expect that by August. And we can show this again when it is updated. If anybody wants to see this chart for themselves and look at it in more detail, there is a QR code there on the screen, or if you Google "MSBA School Construction Cost Chart," it comes right up as the first thing. All right. So in terms of what the school looks like, for this age group, it is important that the school feel warm and welcoming, and so the scale needs to be pretty, not super high, very modest, very welcoming, and not intimidating. So the front of the school, you can see that reflected in the heights of the awnings and the overhang, as well as the materials. We're choosing brick and masonry, because those are among the most cost-effective exterior materials at the moment. And then the lower image there shows the collaboration that would be possible in the new school. Currently, the existing school does not have any of these types of collaborative spaces, but the new school is designed around flexibility and bringing the school and the students up now that we're 25 years into the 21st century, 21st century learning.
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Kane, Principal of Shaker Lane. We've presented this slide in the past, but just to refresh everyone's memory, over the past several years since I've been at Shaker Lane, we have had to really refurbish many closets, many storage closets to fit staff as we expand our programming to support students, to support staff. Just going through these slides briefly, you can see on the top left, that is currently our English language learner population, where they're serviced in the cafeteria in between lunch sessions. When lunch is in session, we triple up those staff members in a room with other staff. So we actually have three groups working at one time in a smaller space. Our cafeteria was built for one-way service with the free lunch that has been passed statewide. Students are, we have 435 students, and all of them are eligible for free lunch, and many of them take advantage of free lunch, as do my own children. So with that, you have many of those students going through a lunch line. We have one way in, one way out. We've tried to redesign it where we could have two entrances, one exit. And so we have a line of about 100 students waiting for lunch in that line. That is the picture on the right of our music room. No windows. Really had to adapt her programming and her standards to accommodate some of the curriculum that she is having a hard time delivering in a small classroom without movement and dance in that curriculum. And then the bottom spaces show offices that we have turned into that were closets. We have asked staff to take these materials home, repurpose them, and we have students learning in closets, as well as support space in the hallway for some of our one-to-one interventions.
All right. So I think just about everybody here has probably visited the Shaker Lane School and has been inside. If not, we've seen the photos. There is a lot more issues with the school that you can't see in the photos, or you can't really see by visiting. For example, you don't necessarily know the condition of the roof or the condition of the boiler. You don't know what sort of insulation or lack of insulation are in the walls. If you've only visited in the winter, you don't know how hot it gets in some of the classrooms. So this list is just a few of the issues that we have with the current Shaker Lane School. We have a team of consultants who all visited the school and did walkthroughs, and each one of them were one of these specialties listed, and they generated existing conditions reports, and that's where this information is pulled from. Some of these are highlighted. They call out what needs to be code compliant, what should happen as a matter of best practice, and things that are just not up to par. For example, playground asphalt is starting to crack in this way, that it cannot just be patched, and we need a full-depth replacement. Some people are aware that there is lead in pipes, and so the drinking water is okay, because they've installed water fillers and belt fillers. But generally, all of the piping is in poor repair. It should really be replaced in its entirety. There are issues with accessibility. There are not enough toilet rooms. The toilet rooms that are there are not wheelchair accessible. There is a lift rather than elevator, which is barely large enough for a student in a wheelchair. And the controls do not enable a student to operate that themselves, so they have to have assistance. Any accessibility improvements would involve the installation of a new elevator. Elevators in schools need to be large enough to the structure in case an emergency occurs on the second floor. So we're talking a large elevator in comparison to that to a small, you know, three square foot that they have right now. I just want people to sort of get a feel for the additional issues that are sort of happening behind the scenes in the school. Next slide, please. All right. So we touched on this briefly before, but I want to go a little bit more into detail here about what would happen if the project does not pass town vote. If that happens, then we lose the MSBA funding, which right now says that they're $27 million, but I think the latest number showed it at 28 or 29 million. That money would then be freed up to go to other communities. The Town of Littleton has spent a little over $1 million to date to produce all of the work that we have done so far to get us to this point. If you decide to pursue this again, then the MSBA would not participate in that funding again, and all of the studies would need to be redone. Also, if the town vote doesn't fail, then it sends a message to the MSBA that the community does not support the project. And so then you have that hurdle of convincing them that, yes, actually this time around, we really do want the new school. And so with all of the extra work that has to happen, it can delay the project by up to seven to 10 years, and each year that goes by is another 4% to 8% increase in costs. In the meantime, the Shaker Lane School remains in operation right now as it is. as it is with that whole list of issues that we saw on the slide before. A lot of the systems are at or beyond their expected life expectancy. There was a report that was done on the school in two thousand and thirteen. And at that time, some of the systems were at or beyond their life expectancy. Those systems are still in operation today, so they're really on borrowed time. So it's not a question of if they will fail, it is a question of when they will fail. So then you get into a situation of having to do emergency repairs. And so that disrupts the students and teachers. Depending on the type of repair, the students may have to find a temporary learning space somewhere else. And all of that has additional costs. And then for code compliance, when the costs of all of these repairs exceed thirty percent of the assessed value, which for the school is two-point-seven-three million, over the course of five years, so that's a rolling five calendar years, then you are required by code to install fire suppression, so a full sprinkler system. And you're required to do a full code upgrade, which would include all of the building systems. It would include the elevator, all of the accessibility, all of the modifications to the toilet rooms. And once you've done that, you still have the same school. There's no real renovations, there's no moving of walls to make things work better. There's no additions. That is just keeping the existing school running. I'd like to ask it to Kelly to say a few more words.
If the town vote doesn't pass, we would be at Shaker Lane School. But as Mary Lee pointed out, many of the critical systems in the school are beyond their lifespan. And it isn't our intent to go into a conversation if the vote fails to build a new school and do the fifty million dollars of code upgrades. But I have to tell you, we're on borrowed time. And there are systems that are going to fail. I've had old schools in many of my districts. The fire panel is going to have to be changed at Shaker Lane. We don't know how much some of these are going to cost, but talking to the building inspector, that fire panel alone could trigger a code upgrade that would be close to this two-point-seven-three million because they would also want fire suppression installed in the school. Boilers, boilers don't typically go in the summertime or the fall. They typically stop working when we have very, very cold temperatures. If that happens, it would be very, very difficult to replace anything. We're already budgeting for new boilers at the high school. And we cannot find parts to replace the boilers at the high school. In fact, we're phoning around and we're asking them to, you know, if you're replacing boilers and you have the type of boiler we have, could you keep some parts around so that we can replace some of the things that are going to need replaced? Now let's take a look at Shaker Lane. They have boiler boilers. So if a boiler goes out in the wintertime, I can't just close school. I have five days to work with, and that's it. I'd have to make that time up, and I can't go beyond June thirtieth. So typically what happens is we scramble, try to find portable boilers or portable boiler to bring in to keep the school heated, which is not going to be inexpensive. And it just, and I understand, I mean, we would make it work, but it would be not appropriate for me not to tell you that the risk increases every year because this school is beyond its life expectancy. MSBA has made it very clear to us that the school, at this point in time, with the population, is two-thirds of the size that it needs to be. And as a result of that, we're going to have to create some more space. Modular seems to be the only way we could do that. So we anticipate eleven modular classrooms. And we're going to try to do less than that. We just have to figure out exactly what we need. But it's not as easy as saying, oh, I'm going to put eleven modular classrooms, and then I'm just going to disperse kids any way I want. We have special education laws that prevent us from, for lack of a better word, segregating kids into different sections of the school. Special ed classrooms, special ed services have to be integrated within the regular education program. So we would probably be forced with putting classrooms out there, making sure that they're intermixed with special education services. And then my understanding is if those portables are not at least thirty feet away from the school, it may trigger electrical upgrades, which would be very expensive as well. So if we push those portables back, we're going to be in the field, in that forest. We're going to have to clear some of that land to put the portables in. And then if we take a look at transition time, we're going to have to be moving our youngest learners around into the central core of the school for library, phys ed, art, some specialized services, cafeteria. So it will be a challenge, but not a challenge that's insurmountable. I think the thing that concerns me the most is putting money into school where you know is not going to last. There's nothing you can do to that school that's going to regenerate. It's just make it last as long as we can. We also need a new roof in that school. Electrical systems, I don't know about you, but a school that old has rodents. So who knows what the rodents are doing behind the walls, et cetera, with our electrical system? The electrical system was never, ever built for any type of technology. It didn't exist back then. So we've managed to maximize what we can. We have a one-on-one laptop or Chromebook program in that school and managed to make it work. We blow circuit breakers every now and again and make sure that we're not adding too many cords to an outlet, et cetera. But we're making do with what we have, so. It's an interesting position to be in. Personally, I wish the cost had come down lower than it is. But when you look at the comparisons in the state and beyond, this is what schools cost. And as Mary Lee pointed out, every year that we wait, there could be an increase anywhere from four to eight percent in the total cost of the project, so. I guess to make a long story short, we're not sure when an entire code upgrade would be triggered. But who knows? I know the fire panel alone is a concern. So this kind of gives you an idea of what we would be facing if this project didn't go through. And the last page, second last page? Just everything what we said. The estimate at this point in time for a full code upgrade would be about forty-four million dollars. It's not a renovation. I've done code upgrades in my career, and the school doesn't look any different inside. It's the same. We don't change walls, we don't reconfigure anything. Most of the code upgrade is actually it. So I think that's important that you know that as well. I've already talked about the modular classrooms. Total cost, fifty-plus million. If we had to do everything, certainly wouldn't be my preference. But unfortunately, I'm not the one that makes those decisions. As soon as we hit that amount of money, two-point-seven-three million over five years, we would be forced to do all of the code upgrades. Now fifty-plus million compared to the cost of a new project, anywhere from sixty-five-point-nine million to sixty-eight-point-seven million for the school, is something I think we need to look at. If we went ahead with code upgrades, for example, we have some information for you to look at. We, fifty-million-dollar cost less premium of three million dollars, less stabilization of six-point-five million. Would result in a bond of forty-point-five million dollars issued over a ten-year period. The approximate tax for the year would be one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars if we were forced to do those upgrades.
It would still require a debt exclusion override because, you know, we don't have this kind of money within our budget. It's a little less premium, it's a little smaller bond, so we could expect less premiums, the offset, that's why it's three. In ten years, it's by national law, we can only bond things within the useful life. And if we do code upgrades, we could squeeze some more years out of this building, certainly. I think as Mary Lee mentioned, it's going to take seven to ten years to get back into the program and with MSBA. So we bond through that ten-year period. And it's, I think it's just what Kelly mentioned. This isn't a renovation, this is simply a code upgrade. So the school looks the same. That's what we have right now.
And the last page, just a reminder, is we have three Shaker Lane tours and information sessions coming up. First one is Wednesday, June eleventh, six-thirty PM. Tour, seven-fifteen, we'll have an information session and questions. The next tour is August fourteenth, and we have one on October twenty-first as well. We're currently having discussions about setting up some community forums, and we just haven't determined the dates yet. So make your voice heard, QR code there. If you have questions, please ask them, and we will answer them for you. And please take some time to look at our website that we've created. There's a lot of good information on there. And I know we go through a lot of information every time we have a meeting, so it might be a great idea for you to go back and just see the progress we've made since we first met with you a number of months ago. And important events coming up, as we already talked about. October twenty-eighth is our special town meeting, where we'll be voting on the project. And November first would also be the Alex Exclusion Focus.
So there's a couple of things that I think we should be talking about and covering. First, any general questions on the project and updated costs? And second, can I get a consensus of the boards? There are consensus, but at least general opinion of geothermal versus non-geothermal. Make that decision if we can tonight, or how we plan to move forward. We presented a couple of strategies, already Mary Lee talked about, two separate strategies on what to do at town meeting. Ninety-four and ninety-eight million are the two options we have right now to bring to town meeting. So with that, we can open it up to questions among the boards first.
Can I ask, what do we get? What's the advantage of geothermal? What do we get and what's the operating cost different years?
Did you hear that? What was the question?
What do we get for the geothermal? What are the, you know, benefits?
Cost benefit, spending an extra four million bucks.
Okay, so both systems are all electric. The annual operating costs are the same. They were estimated at around fifty-seven thousand dollars per year for use of the.
So they're pretty equivalent. The advantages would really come in the replacement schedule. So geothermal buys you ten more years of expected life. It's also a lot less maintenance, it's a lot less physical maintenance if somebody happened to go around and change filters. It's also very quiet. So the air source heat pump requires compressors on the roof, in which case we would need to install acoustic screens so we don't bother the neighbors. But a geothermal system is very quiet. Those costs of those screens are baked into those numbers, so we don't have to worry about that. But those are the main differences.
Okay, thank you.
Similar question. What would the replacement cost of the system be? Like, one's twenty years, one's thirty years. Are we talking at the end of useful life? Do we replace the full system? Or there's just an incremental cost to then, you know, get another twenty or thirty years out of a new system?
That, I'm not totally sure. I can find out more detail for you. But I imagine it's replacing key components of it and upgrading other components as needed. Like, I can find out more.
That'd be helpful, I think. Because it sounds like the big difference is twenty or thirty years. And then, which is significant. But it's in twenty years, what's the expense? And in thirty years, what's the expense? And if there's any differentiation there, we should be aware.
I have a potential stupid question on the same topic, but I'm going to ask anyways. Has geothermal been around for thirty years?
Yeah.
Well.
Stupid question. It's the Roman times, weird.
So just to make sure, there are no cost savings with the geothermal installation?
No operational costs.
Right, the operational costs are about the same. Because a geothermal system still requires electricity to run, so you're still on the grid.
Maintenance cost would be a little bit less.
We have a cost for maintenance and operations combined. I'm not sure how it breaks out separately.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
Showed us a number of MSBA projects that have come on, Dedham, Burlington, all ready. First question is, any of those towns use geothermal? And actually, I'd like to look back even further. Are there any of you guys used? Have you guys implemented geothermal in any communities that have been around? To kind of answer some of the questions about how long it's been around, just so that we could get some realistic expectations for replacement. You know, are there blower motors that need to be replaced? Or it's more the delivery system when it comes to geothermal? Not so electricity because we use the core temperature of the earth. And you're just moving that temperature to maintain the ambient. So if there's any data that we can get, I'm not looking for you to answer right now and just say, yeah, check what's on in April. This is the number. But if there's any data that we can get on that, just because we're going to get asked the questions. A lot of these same questions are going to come up from the public as we start to talk about it, as we have been talking about it. So if there is any data, then you guys are, those guys have Mark and his team.
I believe that, and I mean, they're just both built schools with geothermal.
Right, but it's just a couple of years old, yeah.
So part of designing a geothermal system is they.
Test the soil to see how suitable it is. And then they, the engineers do their magic and they figure out how far apart and how deep the wells should go to sort of offset that, you know, earth warming, which is something that does need to be factored in, right? I personally worked on a school that had geothermal that opened in fall of twenty nineteen. I have not heard of any issues with it, but I can put you in touch with them. And I think among us, we can probably find older geothermal systems if you want to talk to people about it.
And at the top, there's two projects out there, Burlington and Brazil. Two projects that are installing geothermal as well. And we'll check their prices and find out what it entails for them too. Another issue does come up with the site. There is some ledge known in the site. We don't know exactly where it is, and that'll be part of the investigation. And the number of wells that they have to establish, blasting is needed. I worked on the Stonem High School project.
All ledge.
All ledge. And we blasted for three weeks straight. But it's amazing when you dig a well like that and the cleanest of water you'll ever see your entire life comes out. And that system had about eighty or ninety wells. And it's, I mean, it's just open, but it's working beautifully right now. So that'll be another issue that may come up if we run into ledge and, you know, it can greatly affect the cost. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Usually, a geothermal system would require one test well. These test wells are, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty or more feet deep. So it's well beyond what we've been doing for soil testing so far. So you have one test, and then that really helps them answer the questions about how far, how deep it needs to be.
So we could conceivably get to that point and with our luck, them say, eh, it doesn't work here. Or is it just with enough dynamite, you can do anything?
You can still install geothermal with ledge or with a high-water table. That doesn't affect the safety of the system.
So I just did the numbers here. And if you take with the federal tax credit, the cost of, if you amortize the systems over the years, the geothermal is approximately forty thousand dollars cheaper with the credit.
Per year.
Over, it's forty thousand dollars per year cheaper for, over the lifetime. When you amortize. Without the credit, it's about ten thousand dollars more, even including the interest payment. It's the three-point-eight plus the one-point-three, whatever. It's, so it's ten thousand more without any credit on just install, over the lifetime.
Mark, I don't know exactly how you did that math, but on page three, we've got, we've got sixty-eight dollars a month on average to the average taxpayer and seventy-two dollars a month for the average taxpayer. So the assumption here is geothermal is four dollars more a month to the average taxpayer. My question is, that's assuming that we don't get the tax credit? That's with the tax credit?
Yep.
And the tax, but the tax credit.
I believe Mark was taking the cost of the system and spreading it out over thirty years instead of twenty. That's why it's less expensive for the geothermal.
If you amortize the cost of the system.
Makes perfect sense. I guess my question was more about how the tax credit works. So we're going to bond for?
Bond for four million dollars, well, two-point-eight million dollars.
We're gonna bond for sixty-eight million, sixty-eight point seven.
Correct.
We're gonna then receive a tax credit at some point in time, but we're already gonna start assessing the average Littleton resident seventy-two bucks a month. Tax credit comes in, we're okay, tax credit doesn't come in.
So, what, what isn't factored in, and you're onto a little piece of this, is this is assuming that the tax credits are coming in and replacing what we would have put in as the debt exclusion stabilization fund. So, at that point in time, years down the road, when that money does come in, select board at that time and the finance committee at that time can look and say, do we have other projects and reallocate the money that we have set aside for the debt exclusion stabilization today to another project that may be there.
To replace the tax credit money.
To replace the tax credit money, so that's why the if you factor in extra two point seven million into the, the thing, the, the numbers are gonna be very close. But I couldn't make that assumption right now, because who knows what those boards are gonna do in the future. So again, being me, I took worst case.
The tax credit comes in after the building is completed and the system is operating.
Right.
And an application is sent to the IRS, the IRS comes out, verifies it, and they cut you a check.
So it could be a couple of years into the project before we start to see something.
And, so I'm just, I'm just being the average resident that's concerned about my tax bill.
So?
You're, we're gonna pay seventy-two bucks a month from the average person, and uh, it comes in, my tax bill doesn't change, what little, the town of Littleton's actually getting paid back. Because if the tax credit doesn't come in, the town of Littleton paid for it, is that correct?
Taxpayer.
The taxpayer, yeah, we paid for it out of uh, stabilization fund and free cash, whatever. So did the taxpayer, it doesn't really matter if we get the credit or not.
Well, well, no, because, because.
Would, I'm sorry, right.
You, you go ahead.
It would, if the boards at that point in time say, let's keep going with the debt exclusion stabilization account, and add this two point seven million to it. Instead of putting the two point seven million into the account, and not putting anything else into it, sending it to another project.
So if we get the refund, the taxes would go up slightly slower.
Right.
Right, when we, when we do.
Fair statement.
When we apply, yes.
Okay.
Right, so when we do the next big one, like W things. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm not supposed to say that, but um.
That's why I didn't want to make that assumption, right?
Right, right.
But is it also possible that you can pay off the debt with the pay coming back in?
No. We have one opportunity to pay down the debt, and that's ten years into a twenty-year bond, that's what it's called.
So, is it possible that we don't have to bond the two point seven for the full twenty years, and we can do a ban for that until the tax credit comes in? And that would save us the one point three million in interest or a large section of it?
We certainly could, that's a good idea.
I listen to you every once in a while.
So my other, my other question is, did anything happen with the school, the size of the school, the amenities within the building? Anything to go from the initial estimate of a hundred and four down to ninety-four? I feel like that's important to share.
Small one. Thank you.
A change to go from one oh four to ninety-four.
Yeah, so the initial estimate was a hundred and four, and then all of a sudden we're at ninety-four, and again, the trends on this thing have been great, so every time we get together, the cost goes down. Um, what, and my question was, did anything happen with the square foot of the building, the amenities within the building? Any of the educational delivery, the educational plan, did anything change, or did we just get, or our estimate, initial estimates just too high, too conservative?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, because we've done a ton of work to reduce the costs. Nothing that impacts the educational delivery, but we have done things like lower the height of the building, so now we don't have to pay for that extra structure and extra finish materials. We have done a lot of work on the site where we uh, took out granite curves and replaced it with pre-cast curves or the K pod berms. Uh, we have looked at reducing the amount of paving outside by making the drives a little more efficient. Uh, we've looked at using, instead of metal panel on the exterior, maybe using a glazed brick to get some color in there in a more affordable way. So we've made a lot of uh, items like that, but no reduction in square foot.
Educational impacts.
Right.
What is the current size of the building?
Ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two square feet.
You sure?
It doesn't matter.
Which is, which, what, the current school's sixty-seven thousand square feet roughly? And that ninety-seven thousand isn't an arbitrary number, that's the MSBA's standards and guidelines when they step in, whatever the scope of the school needs to be. And those, those numbers get pretty much pushed out, so.
So, I, I misspoke on something on the geothermal system earlier, the maintenance costs are the same, but the operational cost, the cost of electricity is around seventeen thousand dollars less per year for geothermal.
Okay.
That's a big question.
That's a big, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, because I was curious, with, I mean, like, all the numbers that we're talking about are very important to all the boards here, but we're talking about what else? Outside of the numbers, what is geothermal doing besides if we just went with the other system? That was kind of where I was, where I sit here, looking up geothermal.
Trying to educate you, Eric.
And what is it, what's it saving us, um, green light, why are they giving grants for it, things like that, what is the and that, you just, that number right there kind of explained it, because before I was fifty-seven, fifty-seven, we're still burning oil to create electricity, to bring it into the so that that makes, now that makes a little more sense to me.
Could you have a life cycle cost assessment from the engineers, if we can break that out for you all, between the two, two systems, if you want to take a deeper dive on it later?
And it's an element of the IRA, because it's a sustainable technology, using the water of the earth to come in, extract heat, and put heat back in, so that's why they, they want to support it.
And the building's gonna be solar ready, but those costs do not include any impact on so, with using solar at this point in time, correct?
That's correct, there's no plan for actual solar panels installed, but if in the future you choose to, the structure and the electrical connections would be there, uh, so it'd be easy to install them.
All the conduits and everything.
Yep.
So another question, when you go back to the other slide where we had the cost per square foot for various other projects, why so much difference between different projects, is there something driving?
You know, I'm not sure, if you look at some of the historical data, there's some huge spreads across projects, like, there's some enormous outliers from a couple of years ago that are hundreds of dollars per square foot more expensive, uh, so, you know, we're not totally sure, uh, we did provide a lot of information to the estimators about what materials we're using, uh, where we could. We told them specific products that we were looking at, so they could really get the most accurate estimate that they could.
But if you go up to that other slide, that, that now, that zooms in, um, you know, we're, we're ninety-seven thousand square feet, Wellington's two hundred and thirty thousand square feet. You know, so there's different sizes of different schools and different scopes that go on, than just, you know, they're not all the same. So they do variant size, they variant, they may have extreme site conditions that have to be worked on that runs the price up, and so there are, there are other elements that go into it.
Yeah, the cost per square foot is really the best way to compare apples to apples between these projects that are otherwise so different.
And these are numbers from October, so I think what our current number is, yeah, eight forty-one for the geothermal, and it's like eight oh six for the non-geothermal, square foot, so.
So one of the questions that's gonna come up at town meeting is what tariff rate you're using when you're doing the cost estimate, so. Since they, since I'm pretty sure the tariffs doubled since you probably did the initial estimate.
Can you repeat that?
The rate of the tariffs on the steel and the lumber are going to come up, um, so I don't know what rate you use when you did this calculation, but you're gonna have to present what the tariff cost is.
Unfortunately, with that situation, it's unknown, and it's hard for us to even estimate what that might be. When we get the schematic design estimate, it's done, it's a snapshot in time of that right now. We're not bidding this job for another year and a half. What happens in that year and a half with potential changes in, in tariffs or, or anything else, where, where it was voted to have a construction manager be part of this project? So after, if everything goes uh, positively, the construction manager will be on board, which will know the pulse of everything that's going on in the industry. So they may look out and say, wow, we're seeing eight to ten to twelve months from now, all these things are now starting, starting to come down. So we don't, we don't know, that's why, I think you said earlier, this is a snapshot in time of ninety-eight, ninety-four million, that number could be ninety-two and ninety-six, like, depending on how things develop as, as we want.
Yeah, I understand that, but we know what the current tariffs are, and did you use the current tariffs when you did this calculation, or were there zero tariffs? Because we're going to have to assume, someone's gonna ask that number, and you're gonna have to say, if the tariff rate is twenty percent, this is the cost, if it's fifty percent, the estimate, the estimate's gonna go up by some factor.
Steal for?
Yeah, I, those numbers are gonna, it's, those, those questions are going to be asked, I'm not necessarily saying you have to know the answer now, but you're gonna have to know the answer in the next.
So that would be your cost estimator? And we can check in with them on that, but I would like to say, some of the things that we can defend against those unknowns, uh, the major cladding on this building is a domestic product, masonry. You don't really have, we have very few products, and we could even move, there's a very small amount of something would have to come from abroad for the, just for the exterior cladding. That could be, you know, shifted to a domestic product. The steel, steel, that's, I mean, clearly that's, most of the time, something as big would come from Canada, there might be opportunities, and that's the great thing about a C M, because they can look for those opportunities to shift, uh, the best way to procure the material, and, you know, really, you know, minimize the stuff that needs to be procured from abroad. Right, but again, to anticipate the question we get at, at town meeting, if, if, you know, foreign building materials are backed by tariffs, and everyone's trying to shift to using the domestic materials, supply and demand, that price, that costs up, so, you know, someone at town meeting says, so if tariffs, you know, if the, the tariff on steel is doubled, just what does that do to our cost? I mean, I mean, I mean, just for example, if the cost, if the cost went from, the, if the actual cost, and the tariffs went from a hundred, or a, yeah, a hundred and twenty million, what happens, who eats that?
Yeah, Mark, do you wanna talk about where you're seeing labor cost?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, Turner Townsend here is a, um, very large worldwide company, um, and we've been seeing a lot of the labor costs coming down over the last few months, uh, and they're forecasting for this year for them to come down even more. So there could be balances of things where this might go up, and a lot of this might come down, so we're, we're seeing that right now. Um, but, but, I mean, the tariffs are, is a, is a very good question, it's a lot of unknowns, but we can, we can try to, you know, anticipate and risk manage that and say, we're thinking that possibly could be twenty percent adding on to it, and we'll work with our estimators to see how they're seeing it. But also, as we mentioned about the construction manager at risk, we may get them online, and we may do an early bid package for steel, because right now, the price is optimal. Let's get the steel and get that started, because they're forecasting in the next six months, it's gonna skyrocket, so. There are a lot of moving parts still, that once we get to that point, we'll be able to, hopefully. We're working to really reduce the cost of this project as much as possible. I think, you know, ten million dollars off of where we were in October is a very good start, um, we still, we're, again, it's schematic design. A lot of things will be developed in design development, construction documents, the C M's on board, we're gonna look for every opportunity to get the costs down with materials and, and every, systems, everything, the site work that Mary Lee mentioned, there's a lot of changes that happened with the site work, we had a an, an interesting meeting last week with the police and the fire department and the building inspector about how we can make it a safe and accessible site, but also reduce the cost from what we initially thought they would be, and that was reasonably significant as well, so. We're trying, you know, collectively with a, a great team on the building committee, to really do, do everything we can to get the numbers down, because it is shocking.
There is a price escalation already factored in on the entire project, so it's already inflated by eight percent to seven.
Yeah, eight percent, yeah.
So, there, there is something built into this for the entire construction.
Right, and it's.
Absolutely, but it's. Excuse me, I think it's important also that we understand that, we've all heard of lumber tariffs and steel tariffs, but I don't think any of us are real familiar with, you know, where the boiler parts are gonna come from, or the new roof parts, and so tariffs are gonna impact across the board. If there's any way for us to be at least minimally conversant, and, and that, I think that would be helpful.
Because the one thing the town meeting loves the most is uncertainty on cost.
Well, to that end, also, in the cost of not renovating and just updates, I think, you know, you've demonstrated that where you started in October and reduced costs, anticipating at town meeting, someone saying the slip of like, well, maybe you've overestimated the cost to bring things to code, like, could that also not be less? I think having that information would be helpful too.
I just wanna make one point, that on any public project, we're required to provide, for everything that's in the building, uh, three options of which manufacturer could be supplying that product. So one of the things that the C M will do is look at all three, or maybe even look at others, and say, hey, I can get the same thing, or something very similar to it, for a lot less expensive. And we say, okay, hey, no problem, that meets the needs, we have no issue switching like that.
And even when you bid, sometimes you can make a requirement that it's an American-made product, and maybe three options for that too, or maybe even more, that helps. If we run into a year from now escalating tariffs and issues like that, we can try to manipulate it that way, so.
Is the demolition or the repurposing the existing structure, is that baked into this cost?
And so, what about the existing structure?
Demolition of the existing.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the demolition of the building, any hazards, the tariffs is part of the building, that's all part of, it's a total number.
Just, just to go, I'm sorry, to go back to the tariffs very briefly, I think Mark's, Mark's concern and mine is, I someone needs to be conversant and able to concisely describe all of the mitigation measures that you're gonna take regarding that, that cost escalation, because that's gonna be a hot-button topic at the town meeting, and a quick and very accurate answer, here's the escalation costs that are built in, here's the way that we mitigate risk, here's the way that we can potentially change to another material, all that would be very useful to have on hand.
Most people think that a ninety-four million dollar building with a twenty percent tariff is gonna be another twenty million dollars on it. I know that's not true, because you're only paying on the, but that's what most people will do the math on, you're gonna have to have an answer for it.
And, and, you mentioned the ten percent contingency as well, on top of that.
Yeah, there, there is contingency and escalation built into that. Um, also, when, when we talk to the MSBA, with whichever number it ends up being, that becomes the project budget, and so then if costs come in higher down the road, then we're looking at ways to cut back down to fit within the budget, we're not coming back to ask for more money, so even if there is tariff increases, we'll find ways to push the price back down.
And the construction manager at risk, does it end up being like a G M P?
It is a G M P, absolutely, yeah, they, they, they have to produce a guaranteed maximum price, and, you know, once they're on board, they're gonna do everything that we just talked about, look at with the way the world is right now, it's all gonna work, and, and again, it's a snapshot in time with the budget, i- it's gonna change. You know, so they're gonna know what the numbers they have to work with, and they're gonna do.
Why on the timeline does the G M P get signed?
Right now, um, we are.
Because that would sort of eliminate the uneasiness about the tariffs, right, because now it's their problem to deal with.
The construction manager will not be signed up until after the vote.
It's our problem to deal with.
Well, again, we're, as, as Steve mentioned earlier, we're at the point of schematic design, we have estimates right now for schematic design. That's all we're gonna have when we go to the MSBA for their project budget, um, amendment, agreement, that we're submitting at the end, the whole package is being submitted at the end of the month. We have to put in what they call their third eleven formula, which is basically gonna spell out everything in this project, and what the costs will be, and what comes out of that is what their reimbursement and their grant will be. And we'll work with them between, um, July and August and through September to make those numbers, you know, be more helpful for the overall project, because they have to go to, um, the board at the end of August and say, we recommend this project to go beyond schematic design, so.
The town's risk on pricing really ends at the time that the construction manager at risk comes on board and their contract is signed?
When you negotiate as a G M P.
Yeah, right, so if tariffs happen in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, as we're wrapping up, and that's, we're, that's not our concern anymore.
Right, as part of his G M P, he's gonna have built in a pretty big contingency as well.
Right.
And he knows what risk he may be looking at as well, on top of the owner's contingency as part of this budget. So there's, there's fallbacks in case, oh my gosh, things happen, or maybe you wanna add something, or maybe, oh gee, we're good if we can change this to this. There's money there as part of the contingency to do that, but the GMP, he's guaranteeing that this project is gonna cost not one penny more than ninety-eight point one million dollars, and if things change, he's on the hook for, you know, potentially eating that price, but there's a lot of that goes into that too, but anyway.
Did you wanna vote or have a consensus on geothermal?
Uh, I think we should probably discuss how we wanna move forward, or which strategy we're kinda leaning towards. What makes more sense for us at this point in time?
Yeah, and we wanted to bring it to you tonight and have that discussion, because we need to put that information into the information to the MSBA at the end of this month. So if it's ninety-four, it's, it's gonna be obviously different numbers, but if it's ninety-eight, it's gonna be minus.
But my understanding, Mark, if we went with the geothermal, we could always pull out after.
There's there's scenarios that were written there that you absolutely, yeah, absolutely, again, all in schematic design. If something crazy happens in geothermal triples in cost or whatever, you absolutely can do that.
Until we put it out to bid, if it's in a bid document. So that's a year away.
Even then, we can still call it an ad alternate and get the price, just another snapshot of what it's costing. But then it'd be more than a snapshot like that is the cost, and so we can make a decision at that time if we wanna go with, in that direction. Uh, the cost of, between our first estimate at PDP and the second estimate at PSR, the cost difference between the two systems shrink. That doesn't necessarily predict anything about the future, but it might not always be that far away.
I I would love to vote for geothermal wholeheartedly, um, but I'd like to put out, do we feel as those who will be on the hot seat in town meeting, that we can present the cost savings and the energy savings of geothermal in a full-throated enough manner that the town is gonna embrace it? And I say this as someone whose neighbor came back after seeing the brand-new high school and complained that we had wasted money by putting cushions on the seats in the auditorium. So I'm just really sensitive to how sensitive our town is to costs. And if we can put a huge, you know, this is an upfront cost, yes, but over the years, what a great savings, I'm all for it, but we have to have that story.
So I think we can prove those, I mean, by my math, it come, if you're saying it saves fifteen thousand dollars on electricity, it comes out seven thousand dollars ahead over thirty years, so, per year. So it's, eh, without the tax credit, so with the tax credit, it's, we can make it much, much better.
Is that seventeen thousand per month or?
Per year.
We talk four dollars a month with it, just that alone. That, that's a selling point in itself, you go.
That isn't factored in the operational savings.
Like my ignorance towards geothermal, if we talk about what it actually does and why it's good. Then work a way back from there, I think at four dollars a month, people like me are are sold just on knowing that information. For four dollars a month? So, but I think addressing your point, yeah, you're gonna have the people that wanna know the rest of that, all the numbers that Mark was talking about too.
I mean, we need to make that point really full-throated, beautiful, big picture. It's, it, it's a, we're a very, very price-sensitive community.
So seventeen thousand, you know, for twenty years is about three hundred, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's not that significant, I guess the cost, the credit is, i- is what kinda makes really the, the difference there in terms of the situation, but three, three hundred thousand over twenty years, that's not really that significant.
I think the slide that's at the end, uh, that shows the eleven hundred tax, if we just went to code and the eight hundred, that is the most compelling slide of all, something similar to geothermal. With the Mark map of the thirty years, it's, you know, the cost savings versus the not doing geothermal. Sorry, not this, the one, but it's almost at the, yeah.
It's at the end, keep going down.
The one that Kelly presented about the.
Here we go.
It's very compelling, but I think the geothermal version of it being, you know, if we did geothermal, the cost savings over years, and if we didn't.
I like that, yeah.
So it's potentially spending fifteen plus million dollars on basically band-aiding your existing building. Or for another sixteen to eighteen million dollars, you get a brand-new school. That's exactly what they did in the town of Reading. Reading was doing a new elementary school, the Killian School, and they put this information out just like that, I think it was twelve, and it passed, because people looked at that and said, okay.
You know, their information for geothermal is what the cost to operate the new school would be versus the existing school.
A slide or two that are really clear and concise.
Is like the electrical?
Well, you have electric and gas in the building now. So if you take the electric and gas bills that we're currently paying versus what we're expected to pay with geothermal?
It's, the issue with that is, you go from a school that has zero air conditioning to a larger school that has air conditioning, it's hard to compare them, I mean, it's, it's certainly worth taking a look at, but by, um, by virtue of a larger building with more systems, it's likely to have more electricity demand.
I, I bet you could pull the, you know, maintenance records for the last five years at Shaker Lane and get an eyeful. Am I wrong?
About utilities, the, the point is, it's, you're getting a.
Understood.
A really big difference there, just to.
Quick question. When you go through this process before and you had towns that did reject, how often does that happen? Obviously, cost's a major factor, we all know that, but is there something as far as, you know, advocacy, or, you know, how often do we report? I know this is kinda going the weeds, but is there something we can learn from those times where we didn't get passed?
I have not experienced that personally, um, it's, it used to be pretty rare that a town would not pass a project like this, uh, but in the past couple of months, we've seen several. So, uh, that is certainly a trend, I think Mark could better speak to what the MSBA, how they would work with the town immediately after a failed vote.
So what typically happens is, they, if the vote fails, and they're gonna wanna know, I'll get a phone call first thing the next morning, what happened? There's, they have a grace period of a hundred and twenty days that they don't often grant people, um, if they think, oh my gosh, the, what'd you think, was the vote close? And if it is close, what can you do within the next hundred and twenty days to push it over the, the finish line? If the vote's not close, and we say to them, if you even take a hundred and twenty days and try to value-engineer the, heck, I don't believe it, make it small, do all these things and get the numbers down, where people might vote for it, if it doesn't look like that's gonna happen, then the MSBA is gonna say, sorry. And then that's, get back to the starting line again, go go right to the beginning, and it could average anywhere between seven and ten years, but all that escalation, if you wanna go ahead and build a, a new building. So that's a long time, and that's gonna be a lot more money in that timeframe than would currently be, you know, with this project, so.
A quick follow-up to Mary Lee, what is an example of a town that did reject the last few months? You don't have to know.
The Meari School in Zepro, uh, just rejected, the Oakdale School in Dedham just rejected, Killen just passed. Uh, actually, when you, if you go to the, uh, MSBA chart, some of them are identified by a gray X, and that indicates which ones did not pass town vote historically. It's, again, it hasn't been updated since October, and we don't expect it to be updated for a while, but you can see there's, there's quite a few on there that are. Not recent showing up, they're hard to see.
And the next one, you could see.
Not, not the plus sign, but an X.
Yeah, X is on the next.
The MSBA invests a lot of money, and they want these projects to succeed, they really wanna work with you and make them succeed, but they also wanna make the realization that no matter what you do, it's not gonna pass, so I'm sorry, we have to move on and take whatever money might be dedicated to this and put it back in the pool and help another community that might be behind their project, so.
One of the things we have to realize is, we're following their timeline, so we're constrained about how they operate. Certainly, we want to go to town meeting with more solid numbers, but, you know, a lot of times, we can force bids in hand at that point in time. We can't do that with the MSBA, we have to follow how they wanna hold this project.
They're looking at South Borough and Dedham, we're looking at that chart, they, they're actually the, the two highest schools on there that failed. So if the town, their town's looking at that, they're like, well, why are we so much more expensive? I mean, things like that, people look at, and they're like, I'll bring your cost down to everybody else, and we'll vote again, so.
And on this slide, we look pretty good.
Yeah, we do, and that's why the slide benefits us.
That's, that's, the slide matters.
So I have a question on the cost of doing nothing, we say it's a ten-year project, what? Are the, that the, if we upgrade the building, it will only be good for ten years? What's the, how do we say ten years? How did we come up with that number?
We're gonna pay for the upgrades over ten-year buy.
Because we said that it was only, we could only do it for ten years, because that was the.
The useful life.
Useful life of the building.
So how did we deter- determine that the useful life of the building is only ten years when we upgraded the entire interior of the building?
We're not renovating the building, we're just doing code upgrades to the building, it's still space.
I understand there's space needs, but we're saying.
Eleven modular classrooms.
I, I understand there's limits to the building, but we're saying the building itself is only has ten years of useful life.
At that point in time.
When we.
So, so we say we bond for twenty years, and we're living in that, that building with modulas. And five, ten years down the road, we say, we can't do this anymore. Meanwhile, we have ten years left on this bond.
So, there's two different que- there's two different questions, right? There's how long we're going to bond it for, but the slide says that it's good for seven to ten years, like, we're spending all this money, and then after seven to ten years.
Says we take seven to ten years to get back into the MSBA program.
Yeah, go back to the, yeah, slide again, Jim, just towards the end.
I think the assumption is that we'll go back and, and start working on plans for a new school, and that time period is ten years.
Cost of doing nothing slide.
Next one.
Oh, no, go back.
I think the assumption is that even if the town votes it down, leadership understands we need a new school. So in order us for to, for us to continue to keep going, we go back to the beginning of this whole process, and we start a ten-year process again. And so I think, I think what the, the, the assumption is that, okay, we'll, we'll fail here, um, but we need to make a new school, well, in that ten years, we have to keep the kids safe, we have to keep teaching them, we have to do something. And in ten years, we'll once again come to the town and say, here's another plan for a new school, so that.
And we also take it into consideration.
Correct?
Yes, and and as was mentioned before by Kelly and by Mary Lee, you know, the guys did an evaluation on the school in two thousand and thirteen, and that report came out and said, the major systems are beyond their useful lives twelve years ago, and you've made it work, which is amazing. But that doesn't say you open up a school this coming September and your boilers fail, or the electrical system fails, uh, something else major fails, triggers that thirty percent of the. Now you're on the hook for potentially forty-four to fifty million dollars emergency to make this school operate.
And that's not what we want, that's what we're being told to do.
Right, and it's, and you're, borrow time, I think the term was, you, 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 and you, and you've been borrowed time for twelve years, and it's worked, but there's no guarantee that it's gonna happen.
But it's my understanding, like, if the boilers fail and you have to replace the boilers, that doesn't go against the two-point-whatever million, that's just ma- that's maintenance, that's another. Cause we were going through that with the other buildings, right, that.
But that factored in, roofs, HVAC systems, that factored into the five percent.
If any work that requires a permit, whether or not you actually get the permit for it, they can come back and do an audit of the past five years and say, oh, you did this work, that should have been permitted, so we're gonna count it. So it's, it's anything, that's, that's where they draw the line of what counts and what doesn't, it's the permitability of it.
Be confident that MSBA would probably question the fact that if you did a bond over ten years, and you applied in ten years for your new school, and you still have a bond on it, I don't think that would be, it would make sense to them. Why would they, why would they consider us?
I mean, if it's not gonna pass this round, I can't imagine it passes next round with another fifty million dollars on the books. Where does that number, um, two-point-seven-three million come from, over the course of five years, before we have to upgrade the whole, or bring the whole building up to code?
That's what the, the code says.
It's a state requirement.
Thirty percent of the assessed value?
Correct.
So it's assessed at seven and a half million dollars?
Do we know when that was last assessed?
Tax assessment.
We can save money if we only heat in January too.
So I haven't heard anybody speak totally against the geothermal system, so we kind of, I think it makes sense, consensus to move forward in that direction?
I think the lot, the, the, the cheaper operating cost for me, and the longer lifespan is enough to want to do it.
And the fact that we can pull it out if we decide.
That, that makes.
In the near future, that we don't go that route.
Maybe we have another decision point before town meeting.
You need to have much clearer presentation and answer when the question is asked.
Why geothermal?
If we have the same discussion we had tonight, it's going down.
Cause it's gonna be looked at as a bell and whistle, but why all the bells and whistles on geothermal?
No, really, I mean.
Yeah, we agree, no, you're right, Frank.
It's air temperature, it, right, it's, it's air temperature, it's, honestly, it's, we're not, the, the air's not any better, it's gonna be the same temp, we're making this decision because we believe it's a better choice, it's gonna cost us less in the long run.
I think across the board, we've given reason.
And it's, it's.
Yeah, savings, we need to really quantify that, when I look at it, thirty years, fifteen, you know, seventeen thousand a year, like, half a billion savings. If you do get that credit back, it's great, two point five, two point seven plus five hundred, suppose three point two, while you're spending four million dollar worth, you know, thirty years, but if you don't get that two point seven, we're spending three and a half million dollar more. Or, you know, with, even with the savings of, uh, you know, half, half a million dollars. So in that case, it really, I don't know, how do you justify three and a million dollar, even with five hundred K savings?
They're not spending that much more when you figure out the lifetime of the system.
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty percent, or it's, yeah, a hundred and fifty percent useful life of the.
Then, then, people, that's what we need to break in that, you know, what that really means in terms of numbers.
But I, but I think you also have to look at the, the realities of, of a town meeting, cause this needs two-thirds of it, right? Okay, so, e- even, even, and, and then just a straight, um, plurality at the election. Okay, so I can imagine, um, at town meeting saying, we had this option, but we were, and we thought in the long run, could probably do this, but it was gonna cost an extra amount, and we decided not to do that. I think that play, I think it's the wrong decision, but I think it plays well at town meeting, I think two-thirds is so hard.
I can't imagine that we're gonna get into the weeds on the HVAC, HVAC system of a building.
So I think this.
It's sixty-eight dollars a month.
Not only are we going.
It's like the, is the most important thing.
We're gonna hear from every audience member's aunt and uncle who has a cousin who had geothermal, and it didn't actually work that well.
I, I think you go forward with one number, and that's the geothermal number. If it turns out that we need to value-engineer something out, you pull it out and go to the other number to make your, your cost, right? I don't want to see that happen, I'm all in favor of keeping the geothermal in, but you, you go with one number, you don't even have to tell people that there's the other number, really, cause that's just going to confuse them. You pick the ninety-eight number, this is what we decided was the best for the town.
In my opinion, town meeting doesn't like having a choice, cause then they say, you don't give me a choice, I'll just vote no, right? So I think it's really important that we show them, you have two options. One is a brand-new school at this price of sixty-eight dollars, seventy-two dollars a month, or we, we, we don't renovate, we bring, we bring Shaker Lane o- over the next seven to ten years, projected code upgrades at eight hundred and seventeen dollars a month, or a year, I'm sorry. It's like, which one? Yeah, sorry, eleven hundred, it's like, wh- which one would you rather do? Yeah, sorry, eleven hundred. It's like, wh- which one would you rather do? The boards are in favor, I hope, of a brand new building with, you know, additional square footage and additional, uh, educational benefits and and the like, and it's and it actually is gonna cost us less than maintaining the existing structure. That those, that's the choice.
Save the geothermal for a question from the group.
If someone's paying attention tonight and wants to talk about it then, great.
I agree. We have, it sounds like we have great answers for the question, so.
The total project cost is ninety-eight point one million dollars. If someone asks a question, then we'll be prepared to answer, you know.
We chose to go this route.
Really, town meeting has two options. It's live with what we've got at this cost, that ends up being pretty expensive. Or start fresh, brand new building. And in the long run, it's actually less expensive to the taxpayer.
And we'll have a better sense of the public's opinion of things during these open houses that we're having, during these. But we just need people to show up to those things and and it'll be a question and answer period for each one, so come and ask your questions, please.
It'll be a similar presentation like this, too, if we're, you know, the numbers will be very similar. We'll tweak it a little bit and, uh, for the forums at least.
I I I totally agree. If we're in consensus that we should move forward geothermal, and ninety-eight one is the number we started working with.
Should we vote as a joint board? We need a motion?
I don't think it's, I don't think it requires a vote, but.
So we have consensus. Is there anybody against that, basically? Speak now, for all your peace.
Do you need an official vote?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we do. We we just wanted to share with you tonight the exercise that we've been going through for both systems and let you know where it is and what the pluses and minuses, pros and cons are.
As as a building committee, we thought it was important enough to bring in front of these three boards to get your consensus, so that we're not making a decision and you guys come back and say, what'd you do that for?
Well, we all need to talk, be able to talk about it.
Yes, exactly.
Next six months.
And and that's, you know, as much information as we can get out there, and that's why we're having these meetings, so.
There is a community forum June twenty-fourth?
June twenty-fourth.
At the middle school cafeteria, six of us.
We're the first one. We're gonna try to hold one a month until the vote.
Yes.
So it's, I know it's tough in the summertime and everything, but we have heard from people in the town that there's not enough information out there. So we we're gonna blitzkrieg it. We're gonna put outside of the sessions that are gonna be tours of the school plus info sessions. We're hoping that these community forums will get fifty, sixty, eighty, hundred people that can come in and we quick presentation, have a Q and A. So board gets out there and the community, um, subgroup, relations group has been great. Talking about, you know, the lawn signs and like all these things to just put things out there for people can understand. The QR codes are there, the website information is there. There's a lot of information that that people can go to to find information. Uh, but we're just hearing that people aren't doing that, so we're gonna try to do more.
I would also encourage people to use the Make Your Voice Heard link. I read the responses and I respond to them, so previously it wasn't set up so that anybody could respond, but now I can. So if anybody asks you a question that you're not sure of, just tell them to go ask me, basically.
Nice, thank you.
You need the tax calculator now that we've decided on the ninety-eight one will be updated.
I would suggest doing the meetings at the smallest turn you can at Shaker Lane in turn, the middle of summer.
Let's go upstairs and see.
Town meeting in Shaker Lane upstairs. We'll get it.
It's a lot of money considering that Shaker Lane was, what did we say this value?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half million. What have we done?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elsewhere.
FinCom and for us.
No.
Nope.
No, we have.
We have some missus.
We have some adjourned chair. Adjourned chair.
School committee adjourned.
Too many recesses.
Thank you. Thank you.
It could be.
That we should hang around for.
That's, we're gonna have co- public comment in about ten minutes.
Yeah. That's a case scenario, yeah. Uh, we'll take a two minute recess. Thank you. And we're back. Um, we're gonna do things a little out of order. We're going to move forward with the, um, vote to approve the route for the cystic fibrosis foundation cycle for life event. I understand we have someone here, um, who wants to speak to that and they are here from South Borough. Might like to go home someday soon.
I'm actually from, um, our office is in Natick, but I happen to have admired the school in South Borough. So I was engaging in your conversation. Fascinating. A lot of good questions. But my name is Derry Wade. I'm with the cystic fibrosis foundation and our event is coming up October fourth. And we are starting in Lexington and it is encompassing twelve towns in the area. Littleton is being one of them. We have experience doing this event, um, in the Holliston area and, uh, we had done that for twenty-eight years and we decided to bring it up north because our lab is in Lexington. Thought that that would be a nice connection and we're hoping that there's lots of riders in Littleton as well. So we have a wonderful support team, lots of focus on safety. It's our number one priority. Um, we have lots of volunteers at each of the intersections where we can that there's any trouble and certainly we'll contact your police department and things like that and work with them to keep all of our riders safe.
Does anybody have any questions?
Sounds great.
Yeah.
How do you be riding the twelve, the thirty, or the sixty-two mile route?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, thanks for coming out. Great, I'll be in the lead, ma'am.
A great cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move that the select board vote to approve the request of the cystic fibrosis foundation to use town roads recycle for life on Saturday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Second?
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck.
You can't talk about the school committee, they're still here.
Waiting you out.
He's waiting us out. We'll be here all night.
Do we wanna move over to, uh, the thirty-six King Street insulation?
Uh, yes, please. Uh, just one point of correction. Uh, the, on the agenda, I think it's item s- uh, C, I'm sorry.
B.
B, uh, that was a misprint. That is strictly the supporting documentation to support the new motion before you. Because previously at the joint meeting, you voted, I believe, a hundred and twenty thousand for the insulation. It's actually come out to a little more. So which, according to the town account, requires, uh, via the policy, requires a new vote of, uh, a fee to move forward for the hundred and thirty thousand dollars is is the quote, uh, that we that we got and the select board, I shared with you the schedule for the ins- uh, for that installation, installation of the insulation.
I'm just a man. So, Jim, we we voted the last meeting, we did fifty thousand dollars for the HVAC study.
Right.
And we did a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the installation. Total of one seventy-five. That wiped out our funds. So we can't go to one thirty. We don't have the money.
But we, um, we do not, we do not need the 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 assessment funds, the fifty thousand dollars. Okay, uh, as a direct result from working with Diane Dickinson and Eric, uh, Durva. Uh, the company that is part of the state bid list, I believe it's Guardian, that, uh, Diane has been working on, that has done some, that has done some evaluation, already evaluations. They are going to provide, uh, the best, uh, recommendation for the system within that building. And whether that's gonna be hybrid, whether it's gonna be all electric, wha- whatever the system may be. Uh, and that is going to be, that's gonna be provided by.
You know what, what the turnaround time of that stuff is going to be?
I was just asking today in the in the department head meeting and, uh, Eric, our facilities manager, will, uh, uh, will see when that's gonna happen. It's gonna be, um, it's gonna be after June thirtieth. I'll I'll tell you that.
The system is, will be in before we turn the heat on.
Not necessarily, no.
So with this insulation will be in before we turn the heat on?
The insulation will be done, uh, before the end of this fiscal year.
And we're comfortable that that building can be heated?
Yes, yes. I mean, they do, they are operational, uh, but is to be, uh, proactive and make and doing the replacement on on that, uh, on the on the systems. And I, and the school committee and the superintendent have been, um, very supportive of 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 doing that in go- going forward. Uh, but we first have to get to understand what that price is gonna be and we'll we'll be receiving that over the course of the summer.
And when we do get that price, um, we need to involve the school school committee because they would need to, um, potentially vote the use of the school choice money.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
So I guess maybe we need a, I guess a motion to rescind the fifty thousand dollar reserve fund transfer request we voted the last meeting. Second, Fred, second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to change the one twenty-five, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar installation transfer to make it one hundred and thirty thousand. So, second. Second. Brian. Screw me up. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We got him.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have a form.
Still about twenty million cheaper than a new building, I would say.
Yes.
Move that the select board vote to approve the requested transfer in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the reserve fund for the insulation costs at thirty-six King Street.
Second?
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Move on to public input and members updates.
And then we're done. We have to wait here till tomorrow?
Yeah.
Are you ready to adjourn?
Uh, unless there's questions on the school.
You wanna do public?
So, does anybody have any input? Yeah, please come forward. So I neglected to read. Public input will last for ten minutes. Speakers are allowed to speak for no longer than two minutes. Speakers addressing the select board are required to do so from the podium and provide name and address for the record. Comments will be made through the chair, please.
My name is thirty-three Shaker Lane. I'm not sure how I'm supposed to talk because I'm addressing both fields, I also got to.
You can stay at the podium, please, so that everyone can hear you.
It's corrected through the chair.
Through the chair.
I'm a studio architect and thank you, Mary Lee, for replying to my email today. Um, so I'm at thirty-three Shaker Lane, so maybe you know where I live. Uh, and, uh, I, um, was wondering actually if anybody reached out to the neighbors of the project to talk to just that group about their concerns. I don't think I've seen anything like that happening, so if it hasn't, could you please decide, I don't know, who would be the group to reach out to them? Because our concerns will be completely different than the public at large. I expect the public at large will be talking to you about the class. I have completely different concerns. Um, and I think actually our family will be the one that is affected the most by this project. So back in July, this was the plan. So there was still a lot of green area here, the school. I don't know if this was up to, uh, to scale. Because it looks like it was within the field. Um, we live right here. Um, and then over the last couple of months, the project changed to this. Um, so it's right on the border. Everything shifted right. And, uh, basically it looks like when we sit on our deck or in our bedroom, we will be able to look into kindergarten windows, second grade windows and into that little area over here. So I'm pretty concerned that it's got so close to, um, where we live, plus it's kind of hard to decide every, I mean, hard to see this is going to be because every map is slightly different. And I don't know that in general that it might matter, but it matters to us because it might affect the difference of the length of this room or half of the room. Um, and so my questions, when, if we have a little group, um, I would like to ask about stormwater management, erosion control, environmental impact, privacy, exterior lighting, noise and dust during constructions, possible, uh, structural damage from blasting, because I don't know how many wells did you say that had them to be, uh, for digital thermal?
Around fifty-five, but they, those are actually on the other side, but I I understand.
Um, and then also, um, so then I guess New Satrique is moving here, so basically these people, everybody who lives around here might have something to say about what's happening. Um, I I believe these two households, um, probably will have the biggest impact. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to voice my concern about the changes in the design, also how, um, the environmental changes because this showed that the trees here and here would stay. And right now it looks like all of it will be clear cut. So I don't think there is, I reached out to the conservation commission and they deal mostly with wetlands. They don't need to deal with trees. If you get down the trees in the spring, you're going to be destroying a lot of, um, desks because there are a lot of birds in those trees. So this is what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Around twenty-five Jennifer Road. Uh, I appreciate all of you. I'm glad to see multiple boards, committees here tonight. I'm glad to hear about the June twenty-fourth session. Glad to hear about Wednesday's tour. My concern is that we're gonna get just a nibbling of people on Wednesday. Hopefully we're on June twenty-fourth. I just wanna remind you, you did convene, I think, a multiple group session for thirty-seven Chaddock Street as a community session. I'd really like to see the select board, FinCom, school committee hold a session like this, except to hear the public and I recommend a timeframe after the August MSBA numbers are trued up. I think, you know, you might get a greater outpouring. I fear that too many people that I speak with kind of view this as, this is a school committee issue. And then I hear, and they haven't done enough. And I think that's very responsive to hold a community session, so I think that's very, very good. I still think this isn't a school committee issue. This is everybody's issue that I'm looking at. It's mine, too. And so we all have to lean in because some of the issues that were discussed tonight, if we can't get people to focus on, you know, they're not gonna focus on geothermal. They're gonna be with the big dollar ticket items. We have to really bring this issue home to them and educate them with regard to what happens if this doesn't pass. Um, second issue, I'll be very, very brief. First time I walked my granddaughter from Shaker Lane, I was horrified today. I was able to speak to Chief Bernard and the department lot tonight. I literally had her cross the crosswalk and I stared down the person. The person was flying through, the twenty mile per hour was in, and I stayed there and not got her attention, she would have obliterated me. And she was the second car that went flying through. All the cars were already lined up to pick up the kids. All the cars were already lined up to pick up the kids. They were on Goldsmith as well. There's no way that two out of three cars that I saw during that brief two-minute timeframe should be flying anywhere near that fast. So anything can be done. I know you've spoken about crosswalks recently. Something more needs to be done. It's a dangerous situation.
Motion to adjourn?
It's funny, what I was starting to say was, I, I live right, I live right near there and trying to get home when everyone's backed up. It's, it is a disaster waiting, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Number's updates?
Sorry, we're still, we're still doing our business.
Yeah, we. Oh, we did adjourn. We, you don't feel a lot of business.
Mark, do you wanna start?
Sure. So I've been doing a lot of things, uh, related to Affordable Housing Trust lately. I went to the MHP, they had a seminar in Worcester, um, last week that I attended. Um, the, um, MHP representative actually walked the Turkey property with us, uh, last Tuesday to see, her, to evaluate it, to, for suitability for building affordable housing units over there. I also attended a regional magic, uh, Affordable Housing Trust meeting in Concord, where Affordable Housing Trust basically got together and compared notes. Um, Littleton was the star of that with our, uh, small grants program. Everyone was very interested in what we were doing. So, um, and we applied for another one, uh, uh, so that's great. Um, Karen and I, I conducted reviews for, uh, Jim and Chief Bernard. Um, and we're scheduling, uh, Chief McCurdy's to give him his review, uh, this week or next. Um, and on the fun part, um, I went on the Acton perambulation and we marked the, um, all of the markers between Acton and, uh, Littleton, uh, that it still exist. Uh, two, there's one that is, one or two that are missing, uh, that we've known about. Um, apparently when they put in Route Two, they took one away. There used to be one in the entrance ramp on Route Two, but it's no longer there. Um, there's one that's broken, one that's missing. Uh, I'll, we have pictures I'll send out for the newsletter. I'm going to be contacting the other towns to start doing walks with them as well. Uh, we, we marked all of them in Littleton except the Acton-Littleton-Westford border. Um, so I think we'll do that with Westford at some point, so. It was actually a, a fun, educational, and most of the signs, all the signs with the Acton hadn't been marked since nineteen eighty-one. So, so we're just a little bit out of compliance.
It's a five dollar fine a year.
Yeah, to the select board.
Thank you.
Right here is cousin, second cousin.
Dean?
Yes.
Uh, congratulations, class of twenty twenty-five, uh, they graduated on May thirtieth. And, um, just want to, you know, I think, I'd like to kinda blow Littleton torn a little bit. The Littleton Scholarship Trust awards in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand, I think it was more like a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars this year that were given out in scholarships to, uh, to Littleton, um, graduating seniors, so, um, stronger together. We're always lifting each other up and it's awesome. Um, this is our inaugural meeting in this beautiful new facility and, uh, it's, uh, amazing facility and love to get, love to hear it, it sounds like. Uh, watch the meeting later to see if anything we can do to improve. Wanted to congratulate all the sports teams, although lacrosse team, uh, this past weekend was in the, the round of eight, uh, super eight for lacrosse, they had to get out of cohesive and fortunately their, their run ended in cohesive, but, uh, congratulations to all the sports teams. Also, congratulations to our theater program, who was nominated for the equivalent of a Tony Award. Uh, the Tammy Awards are giving it, them, them out. And, um, that was last Sunday evening. And Emily, congratulations to Emily Drew and Bree Burke, who both won Tammy Awards for their roles in Legally Blonde.
Uh, a lot of the same things, Chuck recognized it. It's a great facility we're in, um, it's an inaugural meeting. Um, I think it's, I think it's a great space. I think we'll be able to do, um, fit quite a few people in here. I don't know what the difference is between what the recommended capacity here is, but it's a lot more than any other room we have. And, uh, once again, congratulate all the graduates and, uh, I really don't have much else.
I will not, uh, repeat what everybody else said. I'll just second it.
Or third it?
Uh, nothing for me today.
Hey Karen?
Yeah?
You wanna move the charter up since we have all the charter commission members here discussing?
They definitely have a quorum, so they've met.
Alright, let's, um, if the charter committee is ready, we'd love to hear from you. Yeah, do you, if you wanna sit at the table?
Big kid table.
It's not gonna be that long of a presentation.
Oh, give us to see.
You can drag it out as long as you want.
Okay, so, um, we're officially in order. Thank you for posting us, by the way, because we do have five people here, so we are a quorum. Um, we started in Etsy Bully, one sixteen Foster Street, if you need. Charter committee started in March. We have nine people. Smart, confident people with good backgrounds, but it's a good team. That also meant we've spent a couple of weeks kinda getting together because everybody came with their own expectations. And so we had some of that stuff that we, we worked and I, I think it's working really well now. And I think, you know, the contributions from everybody are, are really good. So the process, I mean, we're continuing our review of, of the structure. We, we all got a kickback there when you got a kick out of the woman coming up to talk about the cystified fibrosis. Byron, who said, wouldn't it be nice if you guys didn't have to spend your time on that and she didn't have to wait in the town meeting for that and then it could just go to somebody else and get done? But it was, it was a good, uh.
Kinda like that stuff.
Yeah, easy ones, right? Anyway, um, so we're going through the process. We have, the Collins Center is, is, provides good structure for our team. They do some of the research, show us what other towns are doing. They even do some of the research into our, our code, here comes what's in our laws, although a lot of things, the wording for us, we have is very minimal, as you probably already know. So it's good and that gets our, that's our structure for going through our meetings and talking about, should we do this, should we do that, what do you think about that, you know, so on. So we started out talking about the executive branch, no, about the legislative branch, excuse me, town meeting. And now we're going into the, the executive branch, particularly the roles of select board and the town administrator. The work is all iterative, so even though we, we say we decided this, we decided it for now because the package at the end is a whole. So we all understand that as we go forward, we might learn new things or have a different understanding as we get more into another area and then we always have the right to come back and change things. So that's how we're going across, approaching this. Also, it, it allows us to move forward rather than saying, but what about, what about, what about? It allows us to just make a decision based on what we know now. This is what we're doing, move on and we go forward. Charlotte put together a very nice tracker for us, so we keep track of all the decisions we made. Or the ones that are in process, or something comes up and says, yes, we need to talk about that, but that's in the future, so it goes on the tracker as a holder. So it also means, we like it, it's added a lot of, of, um, structure and, and comfort, I think, to people feeling that even if we make a decision, say, no, we're not gonna do that, it doesn't just get lost and it's not in the document. It's documented, we talked about it, yes, but we decided this. Partly just so everybody knows it's full transparency, but also for us, because we'll forget three months from now what we talked about. Well, we decided that, but why? So we have all those documents. Um, what else? The tracker is very important. And then, um, okay, so some of the decisions, decisions we made, decisions with, with quotes, because we could change it. The type of things that come up for, in the legislative discussion, we talked about consider adding a quorum requirement. A lot of towns say, in their charter, they actually say, you have to have this many people at town meeting for it to be a quorum. We've never done that. And in, in discussion, and again, we have, we have an interesting group of people, right, with different backgrounds and, and, and experience in the town. We said, we really don't need that at this point. We get the number of people that we need, a reasonable number of people and so on for things, so we decided no, for now. We considered representative town meeting, we talked about that. It was one of the interesting things that came up with that from the consultants was, what, no town in Massachusetts has changed since nineteen eighty-nine, was it? We said, because Kevin was saying, well, why don't we talk to somebody who's changed? Well, the, nobody's done it since nineteen eighty-nine. Is there anybody to talk to? Excuse me. I also listened to, um, the Acton Legal Women Voters did a big study a while back, right? And they, uh, there was nothing that came out of that that made you say, yeah, we really need to go check into that. So basically, after talking through it, and I know you brought it up at one of your meetings recently, um, some of the people I've talked to that live in towns that have that, doesn't necessarily fix the problem that everybody comes to town meeting, educated and ready to vote. So anyway, for now, we said, no, we're not going that route. And, and town meeting's still in Littleton. I think it's still a thing. People that are into it are into it, right? Um, and I think that was kind of the concession, the feeling in town is it's important to people. I mean, it's, it's, we wish it were more, but the people who are there are really into it. So those are the kind of discussions we have. Now we're into this executive, the TA, TM, and the select board, so it gets more interesting, right? A little more personal for a lot of people. The initial discussion was just the TM versus TA versus TM. So what we learned from the consultants is, there is no statutory difference between a TA or TM, it's just a title. So it's just a matter in your town, how do you, how do you manage that? What responsibilities do you give the person? It makes a difference if you're posting a job, to get somebody to apply, things like that. But in terms of, I, which is a surprise we made, there is no statutory difference in the, in the state, though, in terms of one the other. So the consensus now is we wanna use the term town manager. We would like to use that going forward and the charter, we would recommend that. Um, partly, everything's bigger, more complicated. Obviously, when you post the job, you get better applicants possibly. And it, it just gives more of a sense of somebody's in charge and so on. So that, that is where we're going forward for now. Um, so now the big discussion we're having now is, you know, what does that mean in terms of, um, especially for, for a strong town manager, specifically in terms of hiring and firing, the day-to-day management of the people who today don't report to the town manager. So looking back and you can understand the history, well, things have changed a lot. It used to be the select board ran the day-to-day operations of the town, right? Well, you couldn't do that and probably park and rec and every other, and I'm, I'm checking on that, park and rec and library and all the other ones that were out there. And so you had different boards that did that. But now going forward, now you look at it and you say, well, it's really not how things work. There needs to be consistency across, probably. So the feeling now is, is, you know, figuring out how, how, if you're gonna have a town manager who's stronger, exactly how do you do that? Because you still have these boards, who obviously have a lot of input, have a lot of say, have experience, that maybe they don't. And so that's, that's where we are. We haven't, there is no decision at this point. We're working through that. So part of that is inviting you to come to the next meeting. We're gonna answer questions on that. We will spend time, um, individually, I think we'll have some, um, informal, not informal, but discussions, not in the whole group, not with quorums, but go out and talk to some, some of the people that are involved, some of the, um, directors and some of the employees. And then also, obviously, there'll always be an invitation for all of them to come in, if they wanna come in to the, um, our meeting on a formal basis and respond to whatever it is we might come up with. Because the idea isn't here to, to say this is how it should be. What we don't wanna come up with is say, alright, this is, this is the perfect world, this is how we think things should work. But then after that, we found, oh, we didn't know about that. Oh, you know, it's kind of one of those rut row kind of things, right? So the idea is we wanna know. If there's something, if some reason you think this really won't work this way or that way, or whatever we're coming up with, we wanna know it now and then, then you have to make a decision. So that's kinda where we're going through things, um. Dean, anything else? You have questions for us or things you, I should have brought up that I didn't so far?
Alright, so, uh, thank you, questions from us. I'll start with, um, you mentioned you'd like us at the next meeting, is that right?
Yes.
Which is when?
Next Monday.
Mark, myself and Jim got invites.
Yeah, and then afterwards I put something out, everybody's invited. So we specifically, at first, I apologize. When we first did it, we did Gary and Mark. Mark was the chair at the time, so that's why those two got invited. And then the team said, well, why don't we just invite everybody? So I did send something up to the office, but I didn't, I'm, I didn't do it individually to all of you. So, I mean, you're welcome to come. We're gonna, again, we'll, we'll have a document then from the consultants of what we worked through the last couple of weeks in terms of this basic, mostly the, the strong town manager, exactly where do the responsibilities lie, end and start kind of things. And so we wanna have some specific questions, Q and A with, with you all.
So we need to post this as a joint meeting?
I'm, I'm going to be there. Mark will be there.
I, I'm out of town, unfortunately.
Monday. Six. Clock for you guys. We're gonna have Jim come at six. Oh, it's at, um, one oh three, you'll, yeah.
Yeah, post it as a joint meeting, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Starting at seven.
It looks like it's gonna be Mark, Karen and myself.
Yeah, but starting at seven because.
For us.
I'll be there at six, but you, okay, I just wanna make sure with the posting, it start, the joint meeting starting at seven. Would you prefer it at six or seven?
Seven's fine.
Okay. So I, have you guys?
Are you gonna, did you wanna kickoff?
I'm, yeah, um, have you guys decided what your final product is? Is it a charter? Or is it update to bylaws, some combination of it?
It's so early in this process.
We'll go through the assumption it will be a charter. That's the approach we're taking as we go forward. Again, everything's subject to change, as I said, reiterative, but right now, that's absolutely what we're looking at.
Would you be willing to share your, um, decision tracker with us?
Sure, absolutely. We'll send it, I'll send it, yep. Charles, go ahead, Charles, go ahead.
And what in that tracker, it attempts to note which decisions would end up potentially in a charter? And which might be appropriate for a change in a bylaw or maybe a policy recommendation? So we sort of have attempted to park all of our discussions into those types of categories. So some may or may not be appropriate for a charter, but they would still be documented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just see that. Thank you, guys. It's a lot of work. I know you're just, just what you've already talked about, it's a lot of work. You've only been in session for a few months, so, thank you. Just curious, the, you vote on these things? If you guys do vote?
It's not a formal vote, vote. It's more of a, are we in agreement? Yes, no, and then we go forward. And that's, the consultants recommended we do it that way.
Yeah, that's really, oh, you know, I look forward to, you know, what, do we decide to do this quarterly, quarterly type updates from you? Is that what we're?
Whatever you guys want, sure.
I think quarterly.
I think that's what we put, did we put that in? I think we did. So it is gonna be a quarterly thing, I.
Yeah, and there is a work plan too, a very, very high-level work plan. It just talks about what we're gonna be talking about next. We've actually just updated it again. And right now we have a public hearing scheduled for September, because that was the other piece, was to make sure we have an opportunity. And in the meantime, there's a, an email address and, and other things if people just have questions. And anytime when I'm around town, I mean, when I see people and I know they're in some of these boards and different things, I always say, any question, let us know. I mean, we, we do wanna hear from people, absolutely, any of us.
Are you finding MAPC is valuable in the room?
The structure is very valuable. Joe went through this without having consultants. Oh, is that what you're talking about, the consultants? Yes. Collins Center, yeah.
That's on our break.
It's completely different from what I did twenty years ago when we would just get in the room and said, it's all yours. At least now, there's a format that we go by and the call is a center, at least it keeps us in, in line and gives us ideas. It's our work to get things done, but it's a lot more orderly than what we went through, a lot more rigorous. And we know it's gonna be a lot more difficult to make some of those decisions that are coming up, and that's why we wanna consult your board. Your board, our town administrator and, and other people that, that could be involved in any choice that we make. But it is different.
I mean, it's, I, I appreciate it. You guys are kind of on the hot seat right now. You know, this, you guys are gonna be in the deep discussions, like you said. That's all gonna be flipped onto us in about twelve to fifteen months, right? What recommendations you're gonna give to us, what we're, what we're thinking to accept and not. That's where we'll probably have our heated debates on, on things, but. I know there's a lot, there's a lot in that letter and I, I definitely see some of the work you guys do, some of your videos, so it's really.
It's interesting. I mean, it, it is fun to, to go through it, to learn about it and to get other people's, you know, how the, the team, the dynamics work. It's so far, it's been really good.
It, it actually, I think, is a good, to watch your meetings or to discuss your meetings would be good for people that are just trying to learn about town government, just watching your meetings. Learn more from your meetings if you're new to this type of form of government than you would from watching a select board meeting. So just because you talk about the structure and you kind of meat and potatoes.
I'm, I'm really happy, you know, I think I did mention representative town government, town meeting a while back. And I think the very idea of this committee is exactly what I was interested in hearing is. Have someone go and look at, talk to people and decide, is that a good idea or not? Because I know what the pros and cons are, but I don't know how it shakes out in the real world. So I'm super pleased that, that's exactly the kind of question I hope that you all would answer. And so I'm, I'm very heartened that that's actually happening. So keep going.
I, I actually had a phone call from the chairwoman of the Acton League Forum. Saying, we understand you're changing your four of town meeting. I'm like, I don't think so. Because they wanted information. They were, they were going through it, doing that discussion, so.
It hasn't happened since nineteen eighty-one.
Are you posting any of your updates to like the website as they happen, what your decision tree is or what, what your upcoming decisions will be?
We have not done that. The minutes go up, right? Go ahead.
So the minutes are posted and then we did have a, an update at very high level in the May newsletter. Which talked about just the basics, what is the charter, what is the committee about? And then there will be an update in the upcoming newsletter. Again. It is a little more high level, but it talks us, as you mentioned. What are the topics that we're covering? And some very broad updates on ones being discussed.
I, I was just wondering if it would be useful to post, I mean, you guys must have your own webpage on the town website and I don't know if it would be worth. Posting some of that information to that site and. It wouldn't be hard to figure out how to give you access and. The ability to do that, the training to do that is.
I, I don't know. It's kind of, it's raw information and I, I think. It's really, it's because it's gonna be a recommendation to this body. So getting, putting out some of these, some of this information. We could end up getting a ton of questions. I, I don't know. I mean, I understand what you're saying. They have it posted out there so everybody can look at, but it's a, it is so raw because you guys are coming up with just. Ideas and spitballing. I don't know how valuable that would be to the public though, at this point, I don't know.
I don't know. It's something to think about, I mean.
I would be worried that, especially since you said this is an iterative process, that, you know. You'll, you'll feel backed in or into a corner and that you can't change your minds, even if you think, you know, you should.
That's, that's. That's the meaning of it, but. Oh, we'll, we'll look at that. I mean, we, again, we. Everything's an open book. We're not trying to hide anything for sure. It's all, trying to do the right thing for everybody, you know, for the town as a whole. Thank you for that input.
Have you voted anybody off the board yet?
Off the island? I think he's looking at you, Joe.
Oh yeah, we're down to, we're down to five.
Anything else?
Anybody else?
Is anybody bringing a cake next Monday?
Bring cake? Is that what you said? You guys do that here, we have coffee to go with it.
His birthday's next Monday. You're supposed to bring the cake to us.
Alright, I'll bring the cake. So I have to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Chairwoman and members of the select board. So here you have, as you know, with the recent departure of, of Ryan. And part of his duties was as also being identified as the finance director. What I have done is I've taken the role and responsibilities of that finance director and split them amongst the. Collector, treasurer and the assistant collector, treasurer. And here is that we're just, we are adding to the level of responsibilities on to. Level of responsibilities on to already there, the demanding jobs of what they're doing. And making the appropriate requested. Reclassification of, of the positions. Some of those additional responsibilities for the assistant finance director would be assist the development of the budget, the capital planning. All department budget meetings with the finance team. Long-range financial planning, preparation of the financial warrant articles. Year-end reporting, development and presentation of tax classification materials. Discuss recommendations on financial impacts and assist with the preparation of the, of the town annual budget. Finance director, the role and responsibilities is assist in preparing the annual town report. Coordinates and manages all budgetary and financial meetings and information. Ensures that all mass department of revenue reporting requirements are met. Work with departments, prepare a ten-year capital plan. Responsible for implementing policies and monitoring all town revenue. Work with the town accountant to manage year-end balance transfers and work with the assessors on the tax classification. Prepares all financial warrant articles and works with the town administrator, preparation of all fiscal matters and. Reports for the select board and finance committee. So clearly, and we're hitting the high notes. In which the, the responsibilities have, have increased. Significantly along with. Streamlining the reporting requirements with the, the town accountant will be reporting to also the finance director directly. And the finance director, the assistant finance director and myself. Talk multiple times throughout the day of, of a number of different. Financial, financial questions, concerns, issues. Forecasting. And I respectfully request, and you have an updated memo from our H R director. Identifying the respectable. Created step. In addition to that, also identify. The assistant finance director as the chief procurement officer for the, for the, for the town in which Ms. Cuvo. As she got her certification. Official the, just recently and from the inspector general's office and. Accomending based upon the magnitude of beyond with the, all the fiscal, with all the fiscal stuff, but with the. All the procurement stuff, because my message to department heads and everything was whether you're getting a box of pencils or buying a fire engine. Everything has to go through the chief procurement officer. And, and that, that compensation is, is conservative in, in regards to that role. We have any questions with the H R director or anything, anything else I can help with? I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson?
I, I can talk a little bit to this. Just, you know, we'll talk a little bit about the, the personal advisory committee. His responsibility is just to directly classify a position based on a piece of paper that, again, here's the duties, things like that. I think when those recommendations get to Michelle and then Bertie, it's Jim as well. They have to weigh in a lot of things that the P A C doesn't weigh in and those things, you know, I wrote down, you know, internal equity. Not so much across all of the town, Jim is concerned, but also within the functionality of that directorship, if it's finance. If it's, you know, whatever group that it's in. And he also has to weigh in. You know, the salary studies, the local communities, what the market is, you know, local towns losing, we just talked about Acton just lost.
They're looking for.
You know, worry, but you're like, oh, we got, we know what just happened in Concord. They just, you know, basically grabbed two of our people. So those are the type of things. Local town vacancy, salary studies, internal equity, and then the, obviously the classification. Data on our comp table, which cannot possibly be updated faster than all those other things. The salary growth, the competitive nature, those are things that it just can't manage because we don't do it for three to five years. So it give, and I think our new policies that we worked on last year gave us a little bit flex, a bit more flexibility as a town. Gave you a little more flexibility in our board to be able to really compete and work within the system. I think, you know, that's, as I, as I look at these, Mark, you know, brought up a lot of good points. I know Karen, like you showed to me as well. And I sat the Jim and Michelle today a lot and we kind of worked through some of the stuff and. Mark had a lot of good input on some of these things, which is why we have the amended edition of this. And I, I think this. More closely represents where we want these positions to be. Up until, obviously we have a comp study that's probably going to go into effect next July first, whatever happens over the next six months. We will all get that, we'll digest it as a board. And make some decisions on, you know, where we think a lot of these positions should fall. But using, you know, Ms. Cuvo's position from a year ago, it, it kind of is one of the reasons that we spawned. Hey, let's get this comp study done because our comp plan is not broken, but it, it's not up to date and we were already falling behind, so. Other than that, you know, Michelle's here. I think I captured anything, but any, any questions directly related to the. What's on this paper, please, like Jim said. That's kind of the overview of how this whole thing came to be.
I have a couple of specific questions on the job description. Why does the assistant town treasurer have to have a mass driver's, a driver's license?
Why do they need it?
Why is it a requirement?
Most of our positions have that written in the job descriptions.
Why?
They have to travel to another department, the fire department.
Fire department, police department.
I can't ride a bike. I mean, it seems like a weird job. It, it seems, I don't know why it's a requirement of a job that doesn't drive. Right? It's.
A requirement for a ride.
We're gonna put some of those blue bikes like Manino.
And the other one that I don't know that I agree with is the very last one. It says, perform all other duties as directed by the finance director. That just seems so broad and I don't like the word all in there, actually.
We can adjust that wording, yeah.
I still question why anyone needs a driver's license. It's not actually physically required to drive for their job, but.
So is that the other duties as assigned generally to catch all so that?
Historically, that's in every.
We don't get into issues with somebody saying it's not written here, so I don't have to do this.
I'm fine with it. It's just the all other duties is awfully broad.
We have standard language that we use, so it's usually perform all, all duties.
As assigned.
As assigned, there you go. So we can change it to that.
Other than that, I'm pleased with the memo as modified. The other, well, actually, the other comment I have is actually on the stipend for the chief procurement officer. Is this, what is the plan for that going long-term? Is this a, basically a permanent stipend? We're going to be paying or are we hiring someone to do this? And take, replacing this? Is it going to be part of someone else's job description going forward?
Well, we, we do have, as part of my update, I did, I did explain to the select board. That we have. Team member within the accounting department that is currently, that's gonna be enrolled in, in the summer program starting for the M C P P O. That is for training for her position. That is not the same, they're, they're gonna have the same credentials as Ms. Cuvo with an M C P P O, but Ms. Cuvo. Will be the chief procurement officer for the town, so everything's gonna go through her. We are looking at that for, for one year and that could potentially go. It's kind of like when the select board did the emergency management director. That's versatile. It could, it could be with the, that, it could be with the D P W director, it could be at least, it could be with me, it could be with, could be with, with the finance director. So, but that will, and that fiscal amount will follow the position.
Right. So, so it's a long-term stipend. It's a short-term for, for Ms. Cuvo?
Maybe short-term.
Potentially short-term, but it's a long, it's a, it's a stipend that we're expecting to have.
Yeah, I think.
For the long-term.
I think we can talk about. You know what? There are cities and towns that have a procurement officer. It is their job and they make six-figure salaries, so.
Solicitor.
Right, or solicitor. So I think the responsibility put on it, the number was tricky to get to because there are communities, you know, and the research done with thirty thousand dollars. You know, so it got, it was all over the place, but we thought this, for this position in our community, what we can kind of afford.
I wasn't questioning the.
No, I know what you're saying. I, I think, will it ever be part of a job description and that'll be part of a salary? Potentially, yeah. I, trying to give Jim the most flexibility he can by able to say, you know what? Ms. Cuvo moved on. The new person doesn't have that skill, but we have somebody else. I'm gonna shift it over. It buys a year.
And, and just as Chairwoman Oling was just explaining, I mean, you know, there's a process in, in doing that. And one of the things that, if you remember. What the Division of Local Services talked about with the change in governance, they did identify and say, well, you should have a CFO. In addition to a Tommy, it should be a CFO. And potentially, do we make that? And that's an interim discussion. Do we make that CFO that this is part of their position? Or do we make that investment even further as what Gary had explained, that we will have a position just for, for procurement? But quite, but quite honestly, I think we would, we would probably want to make investments in other areas before we got there and continue with, with this going forward. I think there's other areas for us to invest in personnel-wise.
So I'm not opposed to anything on the stipend or the amount or anything. What I think we should have, generally speaking, and this might be a good place to start, is. What the job description for this chief procurement officer is for this fifteen thousand dollar stipend. Right? So anyone that, you know, is eligible for it knows exactly what they're going to be doing. And there's a description for it. And we should do this for all of the stipends so that I can go somewhere and say, these are all the stipends that we have. And these are the responsibilities that are go, are associated with those stipends. So that we can actually see, I mean, because I don't know who all has a stipend for what. And it would be nice to document it all in one place and what the responsibilities are for that stipend. And how we're evaluating that they're, you know, it's basically an extension of a job description. Someone should be, you know, in a year, maybe it's a different part of a review where there's a review of. You know, the stipend recipient to say they did a good job for this or, you know. Because if there's multiple people that apply for the stipend, you're gonna have to make a decision at some point, right? So.
Well, I mean. That's true.
So, so it's, if I could, as I should identify myself, sorry, Michelle, I'm regular resources director. It's different if you're talking about a stipend for a certification. So if you were giving a stipend for an M C P P O certification. Anyone that's certified would receive that stipend. So if you're paying three thousand dollars, everybody with that certification gets that three thousand. You're establishing a chief procurement officer. That's only one person.
Right, but we do the same thing with an emergency management director.
Which is only one person.
But that's a job description that someone's doing. So there should be something written up that this is what the expectations are.
Paragraph on the, on the, it moves with that stipend to the job description.
And I do want to add that the call-in center that we're working with for the class and comp study, they are evaluating all of the stipends that we do have. So I will be providing them a list. Of who has what stipend. There are not many, but I will be giving them a list of those and they can. Of who has what stipend, there are not many, um, but I will be giving them a list of those and they can take a look at, should this be fed into the job description? What does this look like?
I have no objection to this, but I am curious, is the intent to pay the stipend? For additional time spent or on the job, or education and training and expertise?
It's, it's, it's additional responsibilities on the job.
Is it, is it additional time, like that they're gonna spend, you know, more hours per week, for example? Or is it just a, a, a change in the, what they're, what they're gonna do?
I think there are going to be peaks and valleys, there are gonna be times that it's gonna require extra time. And the way this, uh, Ms. Kuvo does, she comes in earlier. Uh, much earlier, uh, in order to be able to, uh, to balance the workload.
There's a legal responsibility that she has as well.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not casting any aspersions, I'm, I'm really just curious, like, the rationale behind it is. You know, we're rewarding someone for working harder, or we're, we're rewarding someone for the, for the expertise and the education that they've got.
Yes, uh, I'm sorry.
Which is it?
Exactly, I'm sorry.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go with that one. It is, it is for the expertise and, and the responsibilities that, that has, such as, you know, Shaker Lane, so. Uh, i- if that comes to fruition, everything has to go through her. Everything, so we have the third exists King Street, she's been, uh, involved with the installation and doing all that and going for change in the HVAC, so. It is a, it is a, 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 a big, a big responsibility, and the finance director and. Uh, they, they are a great team together and a great balance and a great approach.
And I, I think stipends and, this one in particular, critical, but. You know, other stipends, I think, help communities like us. When we need to bridge a gap between comp studies. If we're, if we realize, you know, we're gonna, we potentially are competing against, you know, Acton and Westford and. They, they've got salaries that are blowing people out of the water, we can't maintain things, we can create. Essentially stipend is to help. You know, recruit if even, so I, I think it's untapped when we do a stipend, I know, Mark, they can get out of hand if we don't have them tracked, and we can eliminate some and bring them on, but. I do want to keep it in our toolkit as a tool to be able to utilize when, um, the need arises, for sure. As expert, and I think it is more of an expertise and a responsibility. Which is outside the typical job description of the employee.
So, uh, and just something that I, some of you may not be aware, uh, Ms. Kuvo. Uh, in order to get her MCPPO, would normally have taken months, I think she did in two weeks.
I heard she failed five times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your help and rearranging your agenda as well.
I can, uh, add language if you.
Yeah, yeah.
Move that select board vote to approve the Assistant Finance Director, Assistant Treasurer Collection. Draw job description to. Grade sixteen. I don't need to say the step, I don't believe in here because we're. Uh, the step is, it's step two in this case, it's more.
Yes, si- step two.
Step two. And move that the select board vote to change the title of Assistant Treasurer Collector Payroll Manager to Assistant. Finance Director Assistant Treasurer Collector at a grade.
Sixteen.
Sixteen on the compensation plan, Schedule A, permanent and part-time employee.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move that the select board vote for a salary adjustment for Kim Kovo to. Step two, grade sixteen. The, the salary.
Forty-seven fifty-nine.
Forty-seven fifty-nine an hour, so effective. July first, twenty twenty-five, and move that the select board vote to approve an annual compensation. Of fifteen thousand dollars for the staff member identified as the Chief Procurement Officer. Paid on a bi-weekly retroactive basis to May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
By Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that the select board vote to approve the Finance Director Treasurer Collector Job Description. And move the select board vote to reclassify the title of the Treasurer Collector Assistant. Finance Director to the Finance Director Treasurer Collector Position from a grade sixteen.
Eighteen.
Eight, excuse me, from a grade sixteen to a grade eighteen on the compensation plan, Schedule A, permanent full and part-time employee.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move that the select board vote to make a salary adjustment for the, for Robin Healy to. Step six. Step six, grade eighteen.
Sixty dollars and nineteen cents.
Sixty dollars and nineteen cents an hour, effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
So thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Michelle.
And Kim as well.
Yes, please, thank you, thank you guys.
Safe drive.
All right, go save us some money.
Have her driver's license so she can come.
Do you need a ride home, do you have a driver's license?
It's a stupider requirement for the.
We need to do the town boards and committees, uh, liaisons next.
Robin, if you're taking your bike, wear a helmet. Basket with tote on it.
All right.
So, um.
Somebody mentioned meat and potatoes earlier, that just kills me, sorry.
I said that, I don't know why.
So I think, um. I wanted to review these, I know that. With me as chair, I have some. Things that I would like to change about my own assignments. I would like everybody else's input on. Any changes that they would like to see, not really sure how to go through this by person, or should we go by, by committee?
Oh, is there anything particularly you'd like to, um. Get relieved from?
So, yeah, one thing I think, um, that just keeps getting conflicted out is Clean Lakes Committee. And I think Mark.
I'll, I'll take it on to someone else once.
You would just get dirty under me.
I'm good.
Dirty Lakes Committee?
Anything's wrong with him?
He's only, he's only good up to ponds. Bathtubs.
All right, so, uh, I guess, starting from the top, we've got ACOM as Mark, BPAC as Mark. Clean Lakes as Mark. Uh, anybody interrupt if, if they've got something to say for any of these, Conservation Commission, Matthew?
I'm good with keeping that in, the council is aging.
Okay. Cultural Council, Chuck.
Um, if someone wants it, I, I think I've been to two meetings ever. I can, I can continue to do it, I have a good relationship, but it's a lot of folks on there, but, I, you know, I'll take it.
The Finance Committee is currently Gary.
I think you.
They're, they're usually at all of our meetings, so.
They are, you know, we, we're kinda.
I mean.
I don't have to do much there because they're always with us.
I mean, you can put me down as a backup.
Not a bad idea.
That's a good idea.
On the bigger ones, anyway.
Yeah, I think backups is a great idea, actually. Um, are there any that we've, besides FinCom so far that we think merit a backup?
And I think on a yearly basis, some of these.
ConsCom?
Okay.
No, actually, you know what, like, it's rare that I have a communication with them.
ConsCom is hard because they meet on Mondays, they usually meet at the same time as we do.
But I've taken it as if there's a, something that we need to know about, they reach out, and. We haven't really been surprised by anything from them, so I think.
It totally is.
That it's working, yeah, so we probably don't need a, a backup for that.
Okay.
How are you with the personal advisory, Gary, is that something that's too much time, or are you good with it?
It's a lot.
As far as a backup, it's a term, it's all.
It is, it's a lot of time, um, but it's, uh, it's, it's just something that I'm very comfortable with, as you realize, for sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Uh, let's see, Historical Commission, Matthew?
Yeah, it's fine.
Like a lot of commissioners, we have both Chuck and Matthew.
I'm, I'm good with it.
I think it's good, like, we have a lot of context on the sewer and all the conversations that have gone on, so we should. Do what might go keep that.
And are you both, um, liaisoners, want to be backup?
We have both gone to, when, when there were a lot of discussions with the state and, and Lipoli on the sewer. We were both at the meetings, and I think that that was a good thing to have.
It was, it was good, yeah.
So that was an unusual circumstance, and it was more high stakes than a lot of the conversations.
Probably gonna pick back up again, too.
Yeah, probably, it probably will, actually, now, let's leave that, I think that's a good arrangement.
Littleton Common Committee, are they even still meeting?
I think that's a dead committee.
So let's take that one off the list.
I mean, it's, it's, yeah.
If they start meeting again.
Which may happen as we start to develop more.
Right, right.
And I think that they would warrant it, but.
I think BPAC is kind of also weighing in on that stuff, so. Parks and Rec, Chuck.
Um, I'm okay with it, unless then I'm okay with me.
You can put me as a backup for that, I talk to them a fair amount.
I have PMBC, um.
Too much view?
If somebody is willing to be backup.
I've been there, so.
Chuck, it's backup, PMBC, Personal Advisory is gonna be Gary, and no backup, you're good?
I think he's getting call on one of those meetings.
Yeah, planning board.
They're flexible.
Mark?
Yeah, fine.
Good, School Committee. Shade Tree Committee is fine. Um, Sustainability Committee. We always, I always get conflicted out with them, it's Shade Tree, Sustainability, PMBC, Clean Lakes, so I've gotten rid of Clean Lakes. Let me keep Sustainability and let's, and then.
You wanna get rid of Shade Tree?
If it gets too hairy, I'll, I'll move that.
If you wanna get rid of Shade Tree, I'll take that.
I'd rather not lose Shade Tree just because they're in the weeds right now with their bylaw.
I don't want to take Sustainability.
All right, if I need to, if I need to cry uncle, I will. Uh, taxation, Gary?
This is public meeting. It's also recorded.
Gary, you good on taxation?
What is that?
This is, we do, we do the.
Something we take off?
It's not the senior tax.
No, that's further down.
I don't know what that one is.
Take it off because I've never met, oh, you don't? Nope.
It, is that tread, no, because.
No, because I've, I've met when we do the tread.
The, the exploration of real estate tax relief for seniors is the other one.
They are, are on.
That's on, that's later.
That's the next box down, right?
So we're taking that one off?
Yeah.
All right, Trust Fund Commission, Chuck.
Yep.
Board of Assessors, nobody.
No.
Uh, Board of Health, elected. Mark is currently listed for that, and Board of Library Trustees.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does anybody see any need to add anybody to these others?
I might be the elected housing authority.
I was just wondering that.
I think I am the elected housing authority rep.
But you're not elected from the select, you're not elected by the select.
You're elected by the president.
Yes, that's correct. Oh, no, no, okay, okay, never mind, don't, don't put me in there. Hard-fought election.
So do we need somebody?
Dozens of votes were cast.
But you get nine, I got two.
No, we haven't, we have a full bore, well, actually, um. No, we're fine, no, no, we don't, we don't need anybody.
BTA Community, commuter rail advisory committee.
Is that going to be re?
Is that gonna be?
You said in your update that Brian Kane's coming, are we going to be doing something with the commuter rail advisory committee, or is that's? I don't know that that's ever met.
Is that just a?
That's like a loose party?
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a first, you visit.
An insurance advisory committee, I think, is in, uh, it's a department committee, right, that's. Talks about like Maya and things like that.
Correct.
So that's not really us, us.
Okay, um, the next three, we don't have any say over. Because we're citizens at large, not SVE.
I'm on the disability commission, but it's.
I don't think, LCTV, the EHS Vision Committee, I don't think exists either.
Agreed, yeah.
And the Nagog Hill Working Group is no more either on, when we get down to that one. Transportation Advisory Committee.
So, Affordable Housing Trust on Board of Trustees, Mark, you good?
Yep.
Chuck, Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors.
Yeah.
Okay, Gary, you too?
Yeah, this is gonna move to quarterly until we have some. Yeah. Unless we can move something upstairs.
Economic Development Committee, Chuck. Are you gonna meet?
No.
No, no experience and no expectations, so.
What, 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 what has happened with that?
Honestly, I don't think we had a meeting in twenty twenty-four. Maybe one, and maybe, maybe it hasn't been, maybe I've missed a year.
We need to probably start talking about how.
I think it's important that, I'd say, leave me on the finale, I'll try to, I'll try to reignite that, because I think with the development of common, that might. Preempt something for the common committee.
Okay.
So, no backup? Oh, your backup, yeah, there's a backup, please.
Okay, got it, um, Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Is that still meeting? I don't think so.
There were ideas that they should come and do, um, updates, it turned out to be a massive amount of work.
Didn't Laura, yeah, Laura Yates came and updated us.
Yeah, and so I would, I would say that should be tabled for now.
Okay.
Chakrit's done.
Orchard's done.
For Shake Lane Building Community, let's put Mark in here as backup, because he's, he's gotta stay up to date on that as well.
Okay, I was, yeah, I think. That's gonna be a high-needs committee.
Oh, it's something? What?
It's something, yeah, remember the first hour and a half of this meeting?
That's right.
You go with tech?
I don't think tax, really, I think. Tax, I, I go to the meetings when there are, but I don't, I think tech is probably going to be disbanded soon. So, we'll leave it for now, but you can leave me on there and take Chuck on.
Chuck, are you okay as?
I'm okay.
As the. Does it need for the non-existent meetings?
There's nothing else that we're.
Anybody else that we, oh, well, do we, uh, no, we decided not to do a liaison to charter, right?
Well, Gary's the liaison to charter, but we agreed, and on the backup, but we did agree not to attend the meetings unless they ask.
Okay, but so they should be listed then? All right, so we'll add charter. Gary. Seconding. Got it, anybody, any other groups, commissions, organizations? Star chambers?
Cabals.
Syndicates, all right, great. Thanks, everyone.
We need to vote on that, right?
Is there emotion for that one?
Yeah, there is.
Okay, let's do it.
Move the select board vote. A little terminology, come on. Move that the select board vote to reassign. The committee member liaisoned representatives per the discussion. At the June ninth select board meeting, which we just had.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the list is the, um, Church Meadows.
So you wanna drive this one, or you want me to? So, uh, Church Meadows is the property that the town owns on one nineteen, just past Donalands. The Mathisans have had a, uh, lease agreement, management agreement with the town for the past five years. It expired in, it'd be somewhere in January. I was trying to, uh, get a long-term agreement in place, um, and we just hit some legal snafus along the way. Along the way, so what we have is an agreement basically to extend it for one year. Uh to get them through the growing season and then we'll come back. Um in a future meeting to go for a longer term. Possibly going to town meeting, asking for permission to lease it for longer than five years chunks. Um also part of the the. So people are aware, we're working to put a conservation restriction on that property. And um that's one of the things that is holding up a a longer term lease, so. There will be a con- conservation restriction on the property for use forever, culture, um and conservation.
Modern APR, an actual CR with.
A CR with agricultural use, Conservation Trust is going to hold the CR.
The trust, not the Concom.
The trust will hold the CR.
And everything's been going smoothly otherwise?
As far as any kind of uh maintenance or any repairs or improvement.
They've been great as far as I mean.
That's what I was gonna say, how is it, they have any issues?
I've I've heard of no issues, um they are um very interested in continuing on a longer term lease, they've. They've done a lot of work to the fields, you know, rocks and brush and um. We walked it, I wanna say September, October, uh with the. Conserva- with the Conservation Agent and the Conservation Trust and everything.
What was property there?
I believe it's seven acres.
Both field, between both fields?
Yeah, there's an upper field where they had corn last year and the the lower field they had pumpkins.
Left for pool.
The compensation hasn't, hasn't, has not changed, it's still, no, it's two hundred dollars and there's also. Uh management plan is out of the new one-year agreement also.
So if we're signing this, are we all signing it?
No, it's just.
The motions kinda, you, we just seen. Move that the select board vote to approve the agreement with Frank Matheson Junior. To manage and farm the property located at one ninety-four Great Road.
Chair, second, sorry.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I thought we were voting for her, so.
We just voted then she gets.
We've got the vote to approve an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Acton and the Town of Littleton for an electrical inspector.
Madam Chairman, this is uh uh at the last meeting. You were not comfortable without understanding the uh. Uh the percentage that Acton would be responsible for and uh part of the packet uh includes the. The IMA and which uh this is uh the this amendment is referring to and it's. Fifty-five percent is what Acton is responsible for paying.
Hi, thank you for the update, I'm fine with it, now that I can see the actual order.
I'm good, even though I think it's based on the population difference. Okay, fifty-five. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Sure, fifty-five percent of everything benefits and everything are.
Yes, it's uh correct, I mean, fifty-five percent, exactly.
Good.
Not great, but.
No, I mean, and they're two and a half times our size, so it's.
Yeah.
But.
They've been, they've been.
They've been good, it's shared resource, which is always good to have.
Yeah, it's better than the whole price.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, um. Move that the select board vote to approve amendment to the. Uh intermunicipal agreement, IMA, between the Town of Acton and the Town of Littleton for an electrical inspector.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
BPAC, left to change the board from terms that do not expire to terms that have a maximum of three years.
So um being the BPAC representative, I was at their meeting, um they are one of two boards, I think. That have terms that are indefinite, um we changed all the other, the Economic Development Committee is the other one. Um but they haven't met to change their terms yet, um so I suggested they uh ask. Us to change so that they have three-year terms so that they can get different membership as. Um time goes on and people are more likely to join a board that they don't think they, that has a way off, so. So there's two motions that we have to make, one to change it to terms that expire and the other to actually appoint them to. Three-year terms, so.
In a second, can we add a? Staggered years?
Yes, they're staggered.
That's all, that's in the second motion, that's in the second motion.
That's part of the second motion.
All right, um. Remove that the select board vote to change the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Board from terms that do not expire to terms that. Be maximum three years.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move that the select board vote to nominate on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, two members. With terms expiring in one year, two members with terms of two years and three members with terms of three years.
So. So.
Terms to be three years thereafter, I see what you're doing.
Second.
Getting everybody caught up.
Can we reverse that and make it, so they actually voted at their meeting who wanted to expire in twenty-six, who in twenty-seven and who in twenty-eight? They had three in twenty-six, two in twenty-seven, and two in twenty-eight. So can we do it three?
As a, as a.
Do you wanna make the motion?
As a.
As amended.
Yeah.
Second.
So two, two, one?
It's.
Two, two, one?
Three in one year, three in two years, and three in three years, or two in three years.
Three, three, two.
Did you get that? So, three, two, two, instead of two, two, three.
So.
Three in twenty-six, two in twenty-seven.
Three members with terms expiring in one year, two members.
Three members.
Three in what, three in, she got it, I'll do it. Move the select board vote to nominate the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee Advisory Committee. Three members with terms expiring in one year, two members with terms expiring two years, and three members with terms of three years. Terms to be three years thereafter.
Second. That's not what you said, but okay. You said three, three, two, and you just read.
Three, two, two.
It was on first still.
It's three, it's two, two, three right now, it's, should be three, two, two. Yeah, three, two, three.
Is that what he said?
That's what he said.
Okay, Littleton, I'm Mark, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Put a lot of work into that.
I'm opposed.
Relax, dude.
Was it three, one?
Third base.
Only if I can show you where the one was.
That was pretty dry.
Formal vote to assign Andrea Curran as the preambulator to work with Mark Romback around the town boundaries, do we need that?
Yes, so we discussed it our last meeting, and the legal requirement is Andy needs a letter that says that she's a.
Preambulator.
She's a preambulator. So that's what this motion is, so that we can sign this letter that she can have a copy of.
I thought she just ended the holiday in.
Let me Google preambulator real quick. Okay, so. Move that the select board vote to assign Andrea Curran as the preambulator to work on town boundaries.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next we have minutes.
That being said, Karen. Mark, you might need, we might need to put you. Do we have to assign you that position?
I don't think so, it's can be.
It could be any select board member or two.
It needs to be two select board members or their designated.
Okay, go.
So. And I think actually at our last meeting, they voted me anyway.
Yeah, we did. Just in case.
But if anyone wants to accompany me, it's actually a lot of fun.
I think I will next time.
Anyone but Gary wants.
Depending on the bond, certain, certain boundaries in Littleton, I don't wanna go near, but.
All right, minutes of May twenty-seventh, does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
We do not.
Taking motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of. May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Chuck, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Lou.
Thanks, everyone.